Start. Okay. This meeting, this regular meeting of the common council will start. The clerk, please call the hall.
Counselor Adrian. Counselor Capone.
Present.
Counselor DePiero. Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi.
Yes.
Counselor Martinis.
Here.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
President deFlorio.
Yeah.
Uh, nine members present, would you have a quorum?
Nine members present, please, um, join me to move the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I have a few announcements to make before we start, counselors. Uh, to the viewing audience, I apologize, we're having some technical difficulties. Hopefully you can hear us. Uh, if there are any issues and, uh, you can't hear us, uh, under normal circumstances, the city council chambers, I'm not allowed cell phones unless it's an emergency. I consider this an emergency, so I'm gonna give out my cellphone number. If you can't hear any of our council speaking, please text and let me know, and we'll try to fix it, uh, or try to, uh, do the best that we can under circumstances. And my cell number is six one seven four zero seven zero eight six zero. And to the members that are here, welcome back. Everything has been disinfected. This chamber is disinfected with a, uh, spray. You can leave all your papers there, it doesn't matter, it gets disinfected. You have alcohol wipes, you have hand sanitizer, welcome back. Uh, clerk, please, uh, oh, the other thing, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to suspend public participation. That's the only thing we are having a problem with. And I apologize to the viewing audience, uh, but you can call us anytime you want, uh, with any problems or any issues.
Can you make the other form of motion?
Send a motion to, uh, suspend public participation.
Next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, Counsel, uh, city clerk, please read item number one.
Yes, Madam President. Item number one. It's an order offered by Councilwoman DeFlorio as President, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lateral transfer of Patrolman Ryan Selman to the Everett Police Department.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, if we could, could we please have Chief Maisy before us to give us a little bit of a bio info on Patrolman Selman?
Second motion. I have a second. Please have, uh, all in favor to have Chief Maisy.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Chief Maisy? Welcome, watching.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Good to see you all, ladies. Good evening. Yeah, thanks for inviting me up. So, Ryan is a thirty-year-old Everett resident, graduate of Everett High School, student athlete. I think he's a two-time Super Bowl champ, uh, from Everett High. Uh, he's an Army veteran. He got, uh, at some point he got on the civil service list, he got hired by the city of Brookline PD. Uh, Brookline PD, it put him through an academy and hired him. And, uh, like any good police officer, I was out looking for lunch one day, and I bumped into Ryan, had been a while since I saw him. Uh, we had a conversation, and I always told him we're looking for good young men and women to join our ranks. And, um, we had a quick discussion, and I think it took about five minutes to convince him that Everett would be a good home, uh, for him. And, uh, we had, as you probably know, we've got a number of officers leaving and retiring. Uh, spoke to the mayor, the mayor was aware of actually who, uh, Mr. Selman was. Uh, he's got a great reputation, and, uh, so we brought him on as a lateral transfer, which means no, uh, no training, uh, for us and no downtime. So he hit the streets, he actually got, uh, on our streets, uh, probably about a month ago. Um, and we're waiting to get him formally sworn in, so we're glad to have him. Chief, how long has he been on the first line? Uh, about a year and a half. Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any further questions, anybody else? Uh, Counselor McGlaughlin. I'm sorry. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Madam Chairman, is there a resident here, why would you?
Uh, well, he lives in Everett.
He lives in.
He's from Everett, he lives in Everett, still lives in Everett, yes.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, there is, uh, there is a clause of, uh, for lateral transfers, they technically don't have to live, they have to abide by the mile radius, but they wouldn't have to live in as a, as a lateral transfer. Excuse us for a second.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh.
They will.
Second motion.
The stable action, I do have a second, roll call.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi.
Yes.
Counselor Martinis.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Uh, President deFlorio.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have so approved the lateral transfer of Ryan Selman to the Everett Police Department. Can you come up front so I can swing you in, please? You're gonna do it right here? Aye.
Aye. Ryan Selman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll faithfully and impartially.
That I'll faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the city of Everett.
As a police officer for the city of Everett.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreedly to the rules.
Agreedly to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance. To the commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I'll support the laws.
And I'll support the laws.
And Constitution. So help me God. Aye.
If I just chat, my vote, can you just say?
And I'll bear true faith and allegiance. The United States of America. And I'll support the Constitution. Help the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Just send those two, please, and we'll take the next paper. Congrats, officer.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Counselor Capone.
Could we take items two, three, and four collectively?
Second.
Second. And, uh, motions to take, and she will collectively, and you have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, please read items two, three, four.
Madam President. Items two through four, all appointments offered by Council President Rosa deFlorio. Item two, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Maria Panetta to the Elections Commission as the underwrote commission effective October first, twenty twenty. Item three is, uh, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Edna Michelin to the Library Board of Trustees effective October first, twenty twenty. Item four is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Tyler Lee, I don't wanna chat over the names of, so, to the zoning board of appeals for the, for a term of three years expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Madam President.
I have Counselor McGlaughlin, then Counselor Matuski.
Madam President, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion that we refer items two, three, and four because we are thinking collectively to Legislative Affairs Committee. Um, there are a couple of questions. Um, one of the individuals I have never met and don't know. Um, I think we have, owe it to the people of Everett that we do a due process in, um, getting to know these individuals before we appoint them. Um, some of them we know and some of them we don't. I only know one out of the three individuals here, but, um, I think we should refer all three to Legislative Affairs, and I'd make that as a motion, that we refer items two, three, and four to Legislative Affairs.
Second.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Madam President. With all due respect to Counselman, uh, from Ward Six. We have resumes, excuse me, we have resumes, uh, for the individuals here in front of us. Uh, I'm gonna speak on, I, I know all these bodies personally, but item number three is a young lady named Edna Michelin, who I've known for the last almost ten years. Uh, she's a graduate of Suffolk University, early childhood education. She speaks four languages, Madam President. She has been interviewed by the Human Resources Department in the city of Everett, I understand. Uh, the mayor's office had an interview with her. She's a graduate of Everett High School of two thousand and three. And as a matter of fact, I understand that she graduated with, uh, our city clerk, Kenelia. Uh, this young lady is exceptional. You know, and I know a lot of people that's, I know most of the people that serve on the, uh, library board, but this woman is a, a young Haitian lady. She's very involved in the Haitian Christian groups in various churches in the city. She's a single parent, she has an eleven-year-old son. And, uh, I'm so happy the mayor has appointed this young lady. Uh, her family lives, uh, right behind the kennels. Uh, they were, they ran a daycare center until the, uh, coronavirus kicked in. But I'm prepared, and I can guarantee my colleagues on this board that this young lady is qualified. She's interested in serving in a capacity at the library for the citizens of this community. We know that they, uh, a small statement, I, I think it's nine hundred dollars a year, I don't even know. But it's in that range. It's not about the money, but I'm glad to get a little sun compensation, but it's about public service. And for the people that, uh, especially the library board, which means quite a bit. Uh, she's gonna bring some new, uh, ideas into that group. Yeah, I would hope that my colleagues and the councilmen from Ward Six would at least approve this one tonight.
I'll approve that one.
And, uh, you know, if he has the other two bodies he wants to meet, well, that's up to him. But I congratulate the mayor for, uh, putting a young lady in this caliber on this board. As I said, she speaks four languages, Madam President. Not many people can do that. So I, you know, I would hope that my colleagues agree on this particular appointment. And, you know, I'm prepared to vote favorable on all of them, but item number three, I, I have a personal interest in. Thank you.
Counselor Martinis, before you speak, I just want you to know that item number two is actually Lucy from Luma. Her real name is Maria. So Counselor Martinis?
That's what I wanted to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you.
I wanted to clarify.
So I just wanted to second my colleague, uh, Counselor Matuski. While I do have some feelings about how the late city came to be on the zoning board, I do wanna speak in favor of Lucy Pinera, who is a voice that we definitely need in our Elections Commission. She is, uh, the, the, the head of the Latinos, the Venus of Massachusetts, Luma in Everett. So we all knew Lucy as Lucy, not much as Maria Pinera. She's actually on Zoom as well if we have questions for her. She's submitted her resume, she has democracy and citizenship training. She's been working with our community and would be a great addition to our Elections Commission. And it'd be great if you could just confirm her, um, nomination to have her appointment made. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I, I see no reason to hold these three, uh, appointments up. You know, the thing is that we're becoming a very diverse community. These candidates, uh, represent a, a good example of the diversity, uh, that Everett is, 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 is going through. Uh, to send them to committee where we have not sent candidates to these boards to committee before would suggest singling them out, I don't think that's appropriate. Uh, so I would, uh, I would go to the side with my colleagues over here that, uh, I'm gonna motion for favorable action. I know the motion for committee has to go first, but, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion for favorable action on all three. Hope that's under seconds.
Second.
I have, uh, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I don't know if folks at home can hear me, so, uh, that's why I'm speaking a little louder. My colleagues are gonna go deaf. Uh, Lucy is a wonderful individual, and, uh, you know, my personal feeling on this is I don't want anyone to think that they're being singled out. We did get the resumes this evening. I haven't had a chance to look at them. I applaud anyone who wants to do any kind of public service. Uh, it's true that we've gotten away from referring these to committee, but that's the way it was always intended to be. Unless it's a public safety issue, that's something that does not go to committee, and unless we suspend the rules, these typically do go to committee. I think, uh, at least from my own personal perspective, I think that the city is better served to have these folks come to committee, uh, talk about their passion for a public service, what it is that drives them. I have no question that they're not capable, but I do think that we should be getting back to our procedure, which is to have non-emergency personnel referred to committee and reviewed there. And I think we do a disservice to these folks by not giving them an opportunity to explain why they wanna serve and what they hope to bring to the board. So that would be why I'm gonna be supporting a motion to go to committee and not anything other than that.
I have, uh, Lucy, uh, anybody else speaking, first time? Uh, Counselor McGlaughlin, second motion.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I echo the comments of Counselor Capone, although I share the feelings of Counselor Matuski. I have no problem with this individual that he spoke of this evening, he knows her personally. And if he says that she's qualified and she's good, then I have no problem with that. But I think it gives that a fair opportunity to come meet the colleagues here on the city council, to know who they're gonna work with. To meet more colleagues in the city is never a bad thing, it's only a positive. Uh, Lucy Panetta, I've known a long time, I, quite truthfully, I didn't know Maria Panetta through her policy, so, uh, again, another individual that I, I've known a long time, I've worked with a long time, um, through her organization. Wonderful lady. But it gives the individuals an opportunity to come up here and to meet our colleagues and to talk about their passion for wanting to serve in the city of Everett. The individuals from the zoning board of appeals, I'm sure many have read the local newspaper, there's an elephant in the room this evening. We had a member of the zoning board of appeals who had served for several administrations removed overnight for no apparent reason.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Madam President, no, we didn't allow you, you couldn't, Madam President. There is a point on this resume of this individual that I would like to clarify. I've seen it for the first time this evening. Mister Clerk, can I speak about this resume that you handed to me?
Can I, quickly, I can, I can, I think I know what you're gonna address.
So, it's, the individual residency is a requirement to go on these boards and commissions. It says here, "I will be moving back to Everett." That means he doesn't currently live in the city of Everett. That is a question that we should answer. When is he moving back to the city of Everett?
About six months.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Can, can I answer? Can I answer briefly? There's, there's, residency is not a requirement except on two boards. It's either residency or homeownership or property ownership. This gentleman does own the, the residence that he lived in. He has moved for a specific.
But when is that, Mister Clerk?
Uh, it's redacted because I can't give you his address. You see the redacted, uh, part on the top?
Okay.
So, I, I, I looked, I looked up his address, he's a registered voter. He, as of August, was moving back in September, so that's what that was, that's what that was addressed.
But he was moving back, we don't know that he didn't.
Correct, but there's two parts to that. So you don't have to live here, you can also own property. We have mentioned that.
So what, what harms us from asking this individual to come before the Legislative Affairs Committee?
You asked a question, I.
Yep, absolutely. And, and again, seeing these resumes five minutes ago, I have not had an opportunity to examine these resumes. It's our opportunity, it was the first line that I picked out of this resume. It harms no one from inviting these members to Legislative Affairs Committee to have a discussion. There is.
I have the motion on the table.
I vote to continue to support.
I'll take the vote.
My motion, but Madam President, I don't appreciate you ruling me out of order when I'm speaking on a point.
You were, you were out of order.
I was not, Madam Chair.
You're telling, you're saying.
Madam Chair, women, I was not.
Thrown off overnight. That's out of order. It's got nothing to do with what's in front of you.
It does, because it is how, it's, it's.
You're making a choice between your friend.
No, 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 this is not personal, Madam President.
It is personal.
It is not. It's personal with an individual in this building that made it personal.
Okay, so I'm not gonna argue with you. I have a motion on the table. To send it to Administrator Affairs, I have a second, I want a roll call.
Legislative.
Legislative Affairs, I have two motions on the table.
Proceeding motion is Legislative Affairs.
Legislative Affairs.
A favorable action comes first.
No, uh, a committee takes precedent.
Committee takes precedent, and then we'll take.
Well, then we want to speak.
If that feels. Wait a minute, Counselor. If, if, if going to committee feels, we will take the favorable action on all three, because I have a second on that also.
Counselor Martinis.
Yes, Counselor Martinis.
Um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that, um, Lucy Pinera has been very patiently waiting.
I know that. They're all patiently waiting, so, uh, well, if it's gonna go to committee, there's no sense of wasting their time with questions. So. Unfortunately, going to committee takes precedent over any other motion, so let's vote on that first. You don't have to vote for it, and if, if going to committee feels, we'll take favorable action. Okay? So, going to committee is the first vote.
I will call the roll for Legislative Affairs. Before I do, uh, sorry, I just wanna make sure that, I, I wanna address girl if she's. I'm sorry, Counselor. I just wanna make sure that you can address it, I don't wanna exclude her. Counsel, uh, excuse me, Kevin, do you, can, uh, Counselor Adrian, um, speak for this? I, I just don't, I don't wanna exclude her if she's able to, um.
Everybody is good, if you ask them to speak.
Okay, I, I.
If you ask them to speak, just.
I will ask them to speak now. Counselor Adrian, can you, um, just try to speak so I can see if I can, uh, take the roll call with you included, Counselor.
Um, so what is the motion on the table?
Yep, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I could hear you, and then I'll explain the motion. There are two motions. The first motion will be to send all three of the, um, appointees to the Legislative Affairs and Elections, um, Committee. The other motion, if that feels, will, will be favorable action. But the first motion we're addressing is Legislative Affairs, okay? Um, so you'll be the first vote, Counselor. Uh, this is to send it to Legislative Affairs, it's, uh, Counselor Adrian.
All right, what's the first motion?
To refer Legislative Affairs to committee Legislative Affairs and Elections.
Okay. Yeah, it's on for Legislative Affairs.
legislative affairs, okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi.
Yes.
Counselor Martinis.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
No.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
No.
Counselor deFlorio.
No.
That would be.
Sir, can I change?
Yes, you, I have not read it yet.
No.
Yes, you can. So, that would be six yays, four nays. You have so referred to Legislative Affairs of all three items.
Madam President.
Yes.
You know, October first is sixteen days away. Okay, we are in, uh, you know, coronavirus stage of the game here. Committees are not as active as they were.
I will tell you that the mayor has every right to appoint them for nine-day terms, temporarily if he so chooses, even without your confirmation.
Can I ask for reconsideration on this, and I'll give my reasons.
You have to be on the prevailing side.
There's not a prevailing side to.
So, anybody that's already asked can ask for reconsideration.
Reconsideration. I wanna change the vote, too, when he has voted for Ms. Michelin. Do that one. Oh, no, item number two, a three, rather.
I don't know that it's big, I have to be. No, I know, I can't, I can't just have a. I know the. I know what it is.
Three are going to be. Do we reconsider it? Madam President, can we resume in a normal course of business?
Item number five, if you have a.
Yes, please.
Item number five. Thank you. Uh, is a petition offered by, uh, Council President Rosa deFlorio that the Everett City Council hereby approves a secondhand dealer's license and special middle license to Golden Oldies at twenty forty-four Prairie Beach Park. This is a renewal, all papers are in order.
Favorable action.
Second.
Uh, speaking to your mics, please, counselors, that the people that have that, uh, mics, are set? Can you hear? Okay.
The mic can be shut off. The person mic, everyone needs to talk toward the TV.
Okay, okay, so all your mics are, except for mine, right? And we need to talk, uh, to the mics in front of the people.
Is there a way to turn on the counselor on the TV? So you feel like there's a whole meeting? And the whole thing?
Yeah, I can see her, though.
Okay.
Uh, this is for favorable action. Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi.
Yes.
Counselor Martinis.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And, sorry, President deFlorio.
Yes.
Ten yays, zero nays, you have so approved.
Ten yays, zero nays, you have approved the petition for item number five. Clerk, please read item number six.
Item number six is also a petition offered by Council President Rosa deFlorio that the Everett City Council hereby approves a junk deal, junk collector, secondhand antique, pressure man license form, park, lock, and shuttle at twelve Dexter Street.
Yes, very question on this.
On the, yes, Counselor Matuski.
Where exactly is this location?
This is.
Counselor, you'll have to put your mic on for getting stat banking.
It, it's, it's across from the, uh, resort, uh, in, at the corner of Dexter and, uh, Bow Broadway there, I think it's considered Broadway. Um, it's, it's the lot right behind there, it's a large empty lot. You see, up the corner, which is the, um, which all attached to Minicello Brothers. So that's that whole corner. That's the, that's the location. So I think it's actually considered ten, twelve Dexter Street door, and also has a Broadway address, but they use Dexter.
All right, so the name of the company is Park, Lock, and Shuttle?
Correct. It's been there for.
Well, you know, I'm.
How long exactly, at least, two decades.
Okay, here we are talking about a two-point-five-billion-dollar casino across the street. Got rid of maybe fifteen or twenty car mechanic shops, auto body shops, and everything else under the sun in that area. I'll vote for this tonight, but, uh, you know, I would hope, uh, you know, just the word, uh, junk collector across from a three-billion-dollar casino doesn't turn me on, okay? It's a blight, if, if I'm thinking of the right area there. I know there's two parcels there. I, I, I won't renew this the next time around, I can tell you that. Just the word junk collector, eh, eh, you know, antiques is one thing, but, uh, it doesn't sound appealing to me for what we're trying to do in that neck of the woods, okay? But I'll vote in favor of it tonight, but that would be the last time on this piece, piece of property I'll vote for that. Thank you.
Favorable action.
Second motion.
Favorable action, I have a second roll call.
Counselor Adrian. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.[1590.84]
Yes.
Counselor Martins?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlone?
Yes.
Counselor Paul Towne?
Yes.
President DeFlory?
Yes.
Ten yays, zero nays, you have so approved the petition. Item number seven. Item number seven.
Batty Show?
We could take, uh, seven, eight...
Can we take item seven through twenty-three?
No, not the bottom, wait, uh...
Seven through twenty-one.
Seven through twenty-one, please.
So twenty-two?
Seven through twenty-one collectively?
Twenty-two is also accident. It's always in twenty-three.
Those are different, I can...
Different my condition. Seven through twenty-one collectively, on a favor?
Aye.
All of those, the ayes, yeah.
Items seven through twenty-one are all petitions for small cells. That the Everett City Council hereby approves a petition by accident to attach a small cell along with all the required equipment and files for its declarations to an existing utility hall in the right of way. Item number seven is for in the right of way of 28 Flats on the street. Item eight is for the right of way located on, uh, 38 School Street. Item number nine is to be located in the right of way of 66 Nickel Street. Item ten is to be located in the right of way of 132-134 Chelsea Street. Item eleven is to be in the right of way located on 155 Carter Street. Item twelve is to be located on the right of way on 1812 Prairie Beach Park. Item thirteen is to be located in the right of way located at 242 Berry Street. Item fourteen is to be located in the right of way of 173 Chestnut Street. Item fifteen is to be located in the right of way located at, uh, 55 Oliver Street. Item sixteen to be located in the right of way of 29 Calum Now. Item seventeen is to be located in the right of way on 4 and 8 Edin, 4 and 8 Edin Street. Item eighteen is to be located in the right of way of 136 Pavan Street. Item nineteen is to be located in the right of way 54 Pearl Street. Item twenty is to be located in the right of way of 6 Tyler Street. And item twenty-one is to be located in the right of way located at 289 Main Street with, uh, these all have with electricity connection to a specific home. Correct, um, and just...
They were all approved by the committee, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we happen to have a representative by accident with us by zone? I don't know if we do or not.
Sorry, I'm just trying to see if I can tell if it was on his ear. I do know she had all that information, she just, you know, she couldn't...
Okay.
But we've had this public hearing, so it was okay. But yeah, so I just can't tell, she's up there.
Okay. Well, if I, if I may, Madam President, um, the tough thing I think is we've all come to realize is there's very little you can do with these. They're heavily regulated by the FCC. We do have a, uh, a piece that I put in the committee with regards to trying to see what we can do just to... Obviously, it's a necessity, bandwidth is a necessity, nobody is denying that. But we want to make sure that any antennas that come into this community is going to benefit the community and at the same time, we minimize any detriment, any blight, anything that would have a negative connotation. I know the biggest concern that most folks have is safety. Now, that's regulated by the FCC, we can't really do much about that. Uh, as I said, I do have something in committee, I do plan to have some recommendations that we could probably build into our existing ordinance to better protect our community a little bit more. And one thing that I would ask that we put on as a stipulation is that, uh, in light of the whole safety thing, that we have the, uh, stipulation if accident is willing to agree to it, that for the first year, that not only do they do a remote reading of the emissions that comes from the equipment, but if they would do a manual read, come out to the actual sites and check it. What that will do is twofold, one, it will let them know they're still in compliance, and two, it would give the residents of this community a little additional peace of mind that the emissions that are coming from these antennas are well within the amount that FCC states. There are a couple of other things that I'm going to recommend to our statute, our ordinance down the road. It's really nothing we can do here, so I'm asking that we put that stipulation in. I, I would have hoped that the representative from accident would hear because she has been very agreeable, she has been very patient, the company is working with the city, this was brand new to this community.
Check your radio on.
Oh, is there someone there? Well, the, uh, you know, this, this is new to the community, we didn't have an ordinance, they waited for us to be able to put something together. I want to put a little bit something together stronger. Uh, I'm going to make the recommendation that we add that stipulation to each of these. If that in fact turns to be a consideration or a concern to accident, we could always reconsider it. But I would ask that we put that in as a stipulation that on a quarterly basis for the first year is manual measurement of the emissions from these antennas.
Second motion.
So I have a second on that?
Second motion.
On the motion, Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, Counselor, don't speak in your mic.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I had a senior moment.
That's okay, speak directly towards the TV, those mics.
Toward the TV, okay, my, my concern here is, um, you know, I discussed this with somebody at the last... At the last meeting. These are 4G, uh, technology devices. 4G?
I believe these ones are the four.
Right, these are the 4Gs. I, I was speaking with the city solicitor before the meeting and, uh, as we all know, we're being sued on two locations by Verizon, the city council, because we denied them. We, we're all aware of that fact. You know, and the councilman from Ward 1 said that, uh, the woman here has been very amicable to the city council. Well, if somebody on, on this list here, for instance, we got Pearl Street, very residential neighborhood, Eden Street, the whole list is neighborhoods, really. If somebody at that location prefers not to have this device in front of their house, I think that we, as the city government, should be able to say no. And now we're being sued on the two location, I think one was on, uh, Vaughn Street and the other one was, uh, Woodlon Street. These people did not want it on the, on the, uh, in front of their home. So, you know, my concern here is that we're just going to keep it. And nobody will bring a sample in, we've asked them, these companies, to bring a sample in to show us what this device looks like. Is it a shoebox sized thing or a small refrigerator? That's going to be placed in front of somebody's home. So we're not even given that courtesy, and if you think we're being... These companies are multi-billion dollar organizations as far as I know, I know Verizon is for sure. This other group, I don't know who really they are. But I've seen devices on buildings, and I've said this before, that pay rent, for instance. There's a lot of high buildings, especially now with six, those apartment buildings that were built. It's all around in the, the locations of these. So if I feel like voting no and somebody calls me, I don't want it in front of my house, I personally will vote no, regardless of what the laws and what the FCC says, okay? I'm going to go, but my gut feelings and, uh, and the concerns that people might have. You know, uh, I don't know if anybody at these locations were notified, I don't know that. That's by law, they're supposed to be right, Mr. Clerk? Have you gotten any comments from these parties?
Not to me, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, we had a public hearing, we, I believe, a month ago, so I'm, I'm just...
On all these locations?
Oh, yes.
And people, uh...
We were required to have a public hearing, we did have, uh, complaints on the two, that's why they're at the bottom. Uh, they were not favorably recommended by, they were, there was no recommending, recommendation, excuse me, on 22 and 23 for that reason. Uh, because accident was supposed to go back and to look into it, and tonight, um, I'm probably going to ask you to just hold on to these, only, only those two pieces just because, um, I'm still waiting to hear from Ms. Ferante, she's been very resellable, uh, but I just haven't heard back, I think she's waiting on her people.
Well, you know, my...
She is on, just so we know, I just, she's having technical difficulties getting on, probably could be on our end. She has texted me that she is here, just so we understand it, she did come, I, I invited her, she's usually pretty good.
Well, this is our first meeting in the chamber, and at the next meeting, I'm sure all the kinks will be taken out. And, uh, you know, the council president has worked out to get this to where we are today. However, you know, if I, if we vote against any one of these, uh, from 21 up, we, you know, are we going to be taken to court? I don't get this.
These, these have been...
These have been in front of us for a long time, Counselor.
I know they've been.
Yes, so what happened is...
This is the second group that's been in front of us with this company.
No, this was also in front of us, that we went through the COVID, and then they had the courtesy to say that they would lay it on table for four months or whatever. So to me, right now, either vote yes or no, that's your argument, okay? But to me, I would not vote.
Well, you know, I'm just trying to get clarification.
I understand.
If we both know they take us to court and we lose anyway, that's what I'm trying to figure out here.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, so we have to find out, uh, it, it really is out of our hands, I mean, why even have it on the agenda? But the good news is that these people were notified and, uh, for that reason, uh, I'll vote, I'm going to vote no on it just for safety purposes here because I don't trust the, the comments that have been made, that the 4Gs, the 5Gs is better than the 4Gs, these are 4Gs. They're going to be obsolete probably in a, in a, in a short period of time. Now, this is all foreign to me, okay, uh, this technology stuff. But 4Gs is not as good as 5Gs, I, I don't get it. But anyway, at least the committee has decided to vote, uh, to hold the last two, which I'll vote against anyway, but, uh, I'm going to vote against the whole group. But, uh, even if we vote, if we all voted no on every one of them, it's going to be taken to court by this company too. Until that case, what Verizon has figured out, I don't know where really, where we're at as a city government, city council, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Roll call, Madam Chairman. Oh, yes, Counselor Hyman?
You know, trying to, uh, talk about the subject matter because it's been for us for such a long time, and we've had a couple of years' experience now with dealing with these people. And it is tough to say no to them, especially when they're providing a, a supposed service to the people in Everett. However, I have been asking a question for some time now. And if I just give you a sample of, of an example, we all have gas jets at home, we all use gas, okay? But only one of those little flames was on, on fire, only one of them, it wouldn't even heat a teaspoon of water. But if you turn them all on, and if you leave them all on long enough, not only will it boil over water, it will burn the pan apart if you let it go. And that's what I'm trying to say with, with this, with these new antennas, what's going to happen with them? One, the FCC is saying it won't bother anybody, but no one has come back and said to us, what will all 24 of these do to, to any one person in that area? No one has come back with that answer. Now, I don't think we should vote no on it, but I think we should at least let this go into committee and let it stay there until someone comes back to us and says, these 24 things will not hurt him. Not only these 24, but 25 rather, but all the rest of them that are in the city. What are they doing to this population? Are we going to find out in 20 years from now we've done such a bad, bad thing? Or maybe somebody will come to us next week and say, oh, no, scientists show that none of these here, all of these can affect you. That's what, that's what I'm looking for anyway. And before I can opt to vote for any of these things, the word is out there, I've asked for it, no one has, has anybody had that, any answer from anybody? So, anybody come back to you?
That if they're all on together, do they, do they affect you more than if they individual?
That's what I'm asking for, yes.
So you're asking, I, I don't believe they specifically addressed that, but they did specifically address that they don't, they don't go, the, the reason they're such, um, they're very low energy and the reason they're, that it's closer to the ground, not on the buildings is so that they can directly impact that neighborhood, those homes. Uh, so if I'm having some low cell service, you want to affect those 10 homes that all have, say Verizon, that's how you directly hit them, otherwise, in, in the middle of neighborhoods, there aren't those large buildings. And those, they all piggyback off each other, so that they kind of, and, you know, push, so they go like, from what I'm, what, you know, what the research and what they've said over the last year or so, is that they, they, they work off each other, right, they bounce and bounce, and, and spread it out, and that's how we cover, they cover such a large area so that way we have better cell service, uh, better internet capabilities, so on and so forth. And, um, they can direct them so they're not bouncing into the houses because that's, that's how it works. So the, the capability is to push it one way or the other, and there is a, a range, but it doesn't go, uh, circumference all the way around. It's all the things that I, we, we've been, um, working on, Ms. Ferante, she's in my office, private vote a lot, and we went over a lot of these things, so that, I, that much I understand that what I've been, and what I've heard from the FCC.
That sounds, that sounds pretty good, but let me put this question out there, okay? We've had three companies come in here?
Uh, no, we, we...
Two?
You're missing one from when you were mayor, uh, back in '05, that we originally...
Five companies come in?
So probably about five.
Those five companies come in, you, they're asking for, uh, eight or nine, 10 polls, something like that?
Fifteen to 20 is the most far...
Fifteen to 20 is, is good, you know, so that's a hundred and sixty polls, at, at the max, okay? What about the houses that they're not servicing right now? Don't you think, doesn't anybody think that they're going to be coming back in in a couple of years and say, we left the whole part of Everett up, we want to do them, and then another spot, and there will be polls in every, there'll be those things on every single poll in the city of Everett? That's what I'm really getting down to be concerned with, why does that, how's that going to affect that children? It may not affect adults, but it's going to affect children? We don't, we don't know, and that's why I'm saying, someone has got to come in and say to us, all of these things together will not bother anybody. That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, and, and, and that's your right.
And that's why I think I should say, if you remain in committee until we get those, those answers.
To, to that point, sorry that I, I don't want to overstep, but, um, to that point, we have a tolling agreement, which this company has already given us, three to four months because of COVID and, and, you know, for their sake and ours, we can't continue to vote to committee on these. Uh, otherwise, definitely automatically litigation because we, we've put in a test, uh, unagreably mutual and mutually agreeable time that we've all worked on over the last few months, so I just, you know, that's why I, uh, I understand, but we just can't keep pushing it, otherwise we'll...
That's what I'm trying to say before, they've already given us the giant... Yonka Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I mean, I, I, I understand the concerns of the community and the concern of the members, uh, but I've, I've done some research into this, I've looked at the, the FCC guidelines. Uh, first of all, concerning the collective, collective power of all these different sites, they don't, they don't, they don't have a multiplying effect, think of like a chain. One link touches the next link, which touches the next link, which touches the next link. The first link has no bearing on the fourth or fifth link, so it doesn't have a cumulative effect. But this is something that is, uh, that is branching through to benefit our, our community. And is, and even though, you know, a lot of our residents have fear of this, the FCC does tests on not only the individual, uh, units, but collective use of, of the units in, in conjunction with other, other units. This is all what puts these boxes in federal compliance. That's why it's tough to beat them in court, just because you don't want it in front of your house. I mean, again, I share the concerns of a lot of the community, but that's the reason why the council's being sued is because they are, they are, uh, within compliance with the FCC and we're not a, a governing body in that respect, we just give them permission. This is going, this is, uh, supporting the infrastructure of the community. Uh, think of it as no different than 120, 130 years ago when they were putting electric lines to these, through these neighborhoods to give the, give a particular street power, you know? Well, the research a year ago when these first started coming up was showing an increase in, in Wi-Fi usage. You look at the statistics today with COVID-19, we have substantially more people working at home, that's taking up bandwidth. We have substantially more kids who are going to be, uh, being educated from home with Chromebooks. They need to have this, these, these, uh, um, this Wi-Fi service. This is a service that's not coming into the city for the benefit of this company. This is a, a service is coming into the city for the benefit of the Everett customers in the city who utilize the service. Yeah, I'm not going to oppose this just so we get sued, uh, I, my research showed they're in compliance, I'm comfortable with this. Uh, and I apologize to any of our residents that, that are not, but, um, you know, this is something that the city cannot block. So as a result, I'll be voting in favor of it. My motion, favorable action.
I don't have a motion on the table right now, so what is the motion?
Motion for favorable action.
Do I have a second? Second, okay, roll call.
Yeah, I'm going to go individually just because there may be, you know, so I just think that's the right way to do it. So this is favorable action on item seven through 21, but we are going to read... Uh, good, Counselor.
Okay, good, um, so I know that we suspended public, um...
Comment.
Comment, so I don't know, do we have anybody who opposes this?
So luckily, we did have a, uh, public hearing, um, about, I want to say two months ago, we had public hearings, which are, which take precedent over comment. Uh, that's where the public gets notified and gets to speak. And then at a committee about three weeks ago, we also had a resident come up and speak against it. And that's why the ones on the bottom, if you'll notice, we haven't read them yet, items 22 and 23, were opposed by residents and or counselors, and I'm, uh, going to recommend, um, to hold them over because I'm working with accident on seeing if they can move it to a more mutually agreeable area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, very well, Counselor. So, yeah, we're going to go with you first, just so you know, we're going to read each item individually, we've read them all, but we're going to ask a roll call on item seven, eight, all the way through 21 separately, just in case one person opposes one area and not the other. If that makes sense, okay?
Well, I'm, I'm going to say yes, I have to say yes for all of it except for 22 and 23.
I think I can accept that from you, uh, just to make it a little bit easier, and, and that's fine. So I'm, I'm going to say seven, but I'm going to, uh, go back to you for the rest of them if you say yes. On item seven, uh, Counselor Adrian?
Yes.
And we know that you're saying yes for the rest, thank you. Uh, Counselor Capone, sorry.
Yes.
Um, Counselor Hyman?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey? Yes, just for item seven.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Martins?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
No.
Thank you. Counselor McGlone?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Paul Towne?
Yes.
And President DeFlory?
No.
We have... Seven, seven yays, three nays, you have so passed item number seven.
Madam President, uh, number eight, I need to leave the chamber, I own that property, so conflict interest?
Okay, then, Counselor.
Already know Counselor Adrian, yes, Counselor Capone, and Counselor Hyman?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Matusky?
No.
Counselor McGlone?
No.
Counselor Paul Towne?
Yes.
And President DeFlory?
No.
Five yays, four nays, you have so passed item number eight. Item number nine, Counselor Adrian, yes, Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Hyman?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
No.
Counselor McGlone?
Yes.
Counselor Paul Towne?
Yes.
And President DeFlory?
No.
That would be seven yays, three nays. Um, item number... Um, item number ten. Counselor Adrian, yes, Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero? Sorry, Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
Counselor, uh, sorry, President Florio?
No.
That would be six yays, four nays, um, you passed item eleven. Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
Counselor, sorry, President Florio?
No.
That would be... Seven yays, three nays. Counselor Paul?
This is item number...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, item number twelve, sorry.
Yes.
Um, Counselor Hill?
No.
That's okay, Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
President Florio?
Yes.
And, okay.
We give each pathway, not the opposite.
Eight yays, two nays, uh, for item thirteen, Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
President Florio?
No.
That would be... Six yays, four nays, you have so passed item thirteen. Item fourteen. Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
President Florio?
No.
That would be seven yays, three nays, you have so passed item fourteen, item fifteen. Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
And President Florio?
No.
That would be... Six yays, four nays, you have so passed item fifteen. Item sixteen. Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Uh, no.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
President Florio?
No.
That's a five-five vote, you have fielded item number sixteen. Item seventeen.
I'm sorry, can we reconsider item number sixteen?
Um... You can vote on the prevailing side if you have. Yes, you can.
We're gonna consider it, make a motion, reconsider item number sixteen. Sorry?
All those...
All those were in it, the motion is to reconsider item number sixteen, is that correct? On favor, or opposed, the I say it, the matter is still in front of your back.
Reconsider. And what's your...
Passed on item number seventeen.
I'll let you change.
So you, you're gonna have to do, we have to do a vote again, okay?
Okay, favorable action.
So I just need to...
Favorable action on the item?
Second.
Favorable action on item sixteen, I do have a second roll call vote.
Counselor Adrian, I'll announce your name, just because they reconsidered it, uh, because it failed, and brought it back, so I'm gonna ask for an extra vote, just because there was something different.
Item number sixteen?
Yeah, they, they, it failed, and then someone on the prevailing side decided to reconsider it, to bring it back in, uh, in an attempt to pass it. So, is it a yes or a no? It's just back before you for the same motion as before.
Okay.
So you have the first vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill? Counselor Hill, thank you. Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
No.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No. I'm sorry, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, sorry.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
Sorry.
And President Florio, sorry, no worries. Uh, six yays, four nays, you have so passed item, item seventeen. Um, Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero, uh, excuse me, Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
President Florio?
No.
Six yays, four nays, you have so passed item number seventeen, item eighteen. Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Yes.
Okay, you said both, which one, I said here, not one. Okay, thank you. Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
And President Florio?
No.
Eight yays, two nays, you have so passed item eighteen, item nineteen. Counselor Paul? Counselor Paul, uh...
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, uh, Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
And President Florio?
No.
Six yays, four nays, you have so passed item nineteen, item twenty. Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
President Florio?
No.
Seven yays, three nays, you have so passed item twenty, and, um, item, item eleven is item twenty-one. Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matouski?
No.
Counselor McGloughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitan?
Yes.
And President Florio?
No.
Six yays, four nays, you have so passed item twenty-one. They have all passed items seven through twenty-one, um, and...
Madam President, we take items twenty-two and twenty-three collectively? Second motion?
I have a motion, take item number twenty-two and twenty-three collectively. I do have a second, on favor, on the motion, Counselor Matouski.
I do, I do need to read the one...
I'm sorry, I was gonna read it first.
Please, and then...
I forgot your name, I apologize.
Okay, work. Items twenty-two and twenty-three are also petitions from Exponent, to, that, uh, they propose to attach a small cell in town alone with all required equipment in five for its operation to an existing utility pole in the right-of-way located at seventeen Main Street with connection to pole number two oh, two zero eight oh. And twenty-three is that the city council hereby present petition by Exponent to attach a small cell in town alone with all required equipment in five for its operation to an existing utility pole in the right-of-way located at sixty-six Main Street with electricity connection, pole number one two five five. Um, these did not come out, uh, these had no recommendation out of the committee.
Uh, Counselor Matouski?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, sixty-six Main Street is a, is the, uh, the village co-op.
Yeah.
Now, why wouldn't they put it on top of the building?
They already have about ten on top of it.
Ten there, yeah.
So there's ten there, well, what's this all about there?
It's the same thing as they explained.
See, this is, this is what I'm trying to get at. This ten there, ten is on that building, which is ten stories high. And they wanna put one on the, you know, it's a senior citizens building, and I'm sure they're opposed to it there, but the other one on Maplewood Ave, I know those people who are up here, okay? I have a good memory of who comes up there. We have to put down the reasons to deny, deny this petition, because we're gonna be taking to court quite a bit on, on these things.
Okay.
And, you know, Madam President, I'm a little worried that other companies are gonna come every... And we're gonna be loading these polls up, and they're bad enough, but it is now. When does it stop? That's what I'd like to know. You know, I'd like to be the nice guy and the nice lady that comes up here, you know, weekend. She gets paid to do that. And these companies aren't poor companies. Somebody said that, uh, you know, we're, you know, they're doing us a favor here. They're making money. These companies are making money, big money, and they charge for it too. I don't know, anybody's podcast bill went down recently, you? Through the roof, it's disgusting. For basic service, for, come, come on. Okay, so the reasons to deny, Madam President, we want the clerk to write these down, because we're gonna be taking to court on a regular basis if we're denying these devices. Reasons to deny that the people, well, on, on Maplewood Ave, the resident who owns the home in front of the pole wishes not to have it there because he's concerned about his health and his family. And it may even be unsightly. You keep, okay, we're not done yet. And he's paying, he's paying taxes. What do these people pay, two hundred and twelve, uh, thing on the poll?
They pay a hundred dollars upfront for each pole, and then annually two hundred and seventy, for as long as they have it on the pole. So two hundred and seventy after each, besides, uh, whatever they, to utilize the pole that they, is they don't own it.
No, it's a, two hundred and fifty. Well, the reason, well, I know, I don't know if anybody's seen these devices on this jury. Has anybody seen these devices?
No.
What are they, are they small, refrigerator-sized?
They, they can't be, um, according to our, because we created ordinances along with, uh, they can't be twenty-one and twenty-two with feet. They're roughly, say at the biggest, I think it's like three by three, uh, Counselor Paul, roughly, I, I can't...
Three by three is a pretty big device in front of a single phone.
I think they're a little smaller, but I think that's the maximum, they can be.
Yeah, well, I've asked, Madam President, I have asked these companies, and everybody here knows that I've asked that they bring these devices to our meeting, so not only can we see it, but the people whose home is gonna be in front of see it. And they have yet to do that. And that's another reason, they fail to bring the device to the city council chambers. Now, if anybody wants to add on, Mr. Hillen knows what these people mentioned, uh, when they were up here. If anybody wants, because we need to list reasons, uh, Madam President. And Mr. Burley can attest to this, we've been sued in the past. If you don't put the reasons down, uh, and when you go to court, it's like, hello, what did you, why didn't you do that? And, and illegal, uh, people can't have any recourse. So if there's anybody else wants to add, these are only the ones that I can think of. And, uh, you know, that's just my feeling on it. But at least you're denying two, the committee is recommending not granting these two, which, uh, I'm very happy to hear.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor McGloughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, Madam President, I echo the comments of House Matouski, and I will add a couple of additional, uh, thoughts to the, for the record. One being that the pole height difference on Maplewood Ave is different than on a straight street because of the height of the hill, tilt. It makes it more straight to the window of a home, uh, more evenly distanced to the, um, height of the window of a home than versus, uh, a street in a neighborhood that is, is flat. Um, so the height of the pole is different in grade, uh, on that home, on Maplewood Ave. And that is one of the bigger concerns, is that that individual bedroom window is much closer to that pole height to the top of it than it would be on a typical street like you and I, House Matouski, or any of us live on. It's a little hill, but, um, that, that height different, differential is one of the others. Another one is the, uh, individuals at sixty-six Main Street are concerned by the mechanism, Another one is the, uh, individuals in sixty-sixth Main Street are concerned by the mechanism, the equipment that they, some of their residents utilize, um, for health reasons, uh, and you're going to now interfere with all of these wagwigs, uh, in the air. Um, is one of the other reasons why the residents in sixty-sixth Main Street have reached out to me and asked that, uh, we look carefully at these because they have all sorts of devices. I may ask for us to ask those questions, but we have not had the opportunity. Uh, Ms. Rocky has been very open, has been very accessible. Uh, she has tried to be here tonight, she has some other technical issues with being here.
Yes, we had some issues in common consideration.
But that's, that's the end, that's okay. I think we're going to lay these over, I look forward to talking with Ms. Rocky about these. But I wanted to add those concerns that I heard from residents. You have seen tonight that I have voted yes and no on some of these. I voted against the ones where people have called me and talked to me about their, about, in front of their homes. That's why you've seen me go from yes and no on these tonight. Uh, that being said, those are additional conditions that I would like to have the clerk add in for the record. So when we go forward, if we deny these, these comments can be on the record, um, for our legal team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, free to our clerk. Where do we stand with the tolling agreements as far as timeframe? Because I think one thing that we need to understand is unless, uh, Exponent is agreeable to the recommendation that was made by the committee, we have to vote on it one way or the other, because if we don't, it's going to automatically be approved. So I want us to figure out where we're at now.
So, uh, the council president, we have the, the council, um, last month, signed, uh, an agreement that would extend until September thirty. So we do have one more meeting, so that's why I, I wouldn't put you in a position to go pass the tolling agreement, that gets you to the twenty-eighth, even though it's two days before, but at least you can make an upper down decision by then. And I am on the phone with her and she's trying to work with me now to see what we're doing.
So, Madam President, the motion I would make is that, uh, we lay twenty-three, twenty-two and twenty-three over to our next meeting. Uh, refer the matter to the clerk, so he can continue to work with Exponent. See if we can find an alternate location for those two, two, uh, individual addresses. Second motion.
Uh, there was no other motion on the table.
I think that's all.
Okay, uh, Council Adrian is not on camera, so unfortunately not going to be able to take her call until, uh, she has to be live on the camera, make sure, I have to make sure she's in the room, so I have to make sure I have a form on her. And we need the people.
She is, yeah.
I understand, I have to see the picture.
Yep, I can, I, I can, thank you.
Okay, very good, appreciate it. And the office is out of the room, where do I have this?
You can say.
It's just, it's just a voice call. It's just a voice call.
It's just to postpone items twenty-two and twenty-three over.
So the motion is to postpone items twenty-
Just, just so I understand this. Uh, we're going to lay this over and then going to vote on it, uh, the last meeting in September.
We're going to postpone it to the next meeting in September. In the meantime, this clerk is going to work on to relocate these poles. Is that, do I have that correct, uh, City Clerk? Yes, okay.
Okay, and, and if she can't relocate these devices.
Then it's a two council.
Then, right, you vote yes or no, so you rise to the occasion more or less. Okay, good, it's nice to see that here once in a while.
And, and she did want to make sure that you did know that not only her, but and her engineer over here. It just might have issues getting.
So if they can't relocate it, Madam President, you either vote yes or no.
That's correct.
Very good.
Okay, so this is going to refer to the, uh, next meeting on the twenty eighth. Uh, do have a second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Items twenty-two and twenty-three is postponed until the September twenty-eighth. Clerk, please. Uh, read item number twenty-four.
Madam, Madam President, item twenty-four is a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone that the administration update accounts on all claims and all losses pending against the city and or any other stakeholders.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the city solicitor has been in touch with me with regards to claims, there's one particular claim that she's going to be getting some additional information to me. But there's one issue that I think is of significant importance to this entire body, especially where we have some new members, it's the power plant litigation. So I'm going to ask that we refer this to the CFO and to the Board of Assessors and request that they provide an update on the status in executive session to this body.
So the motion is to refer, I am going to show it to the CFO and the Board of Assessors, with the recommendation that it goes into executive session.
And productive on the.
Update on the power plant.
Second.
Second.
I do have a second. Uh, all favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Yes, Counselor, I'm sorry, you want to get up on the first employee privilege?
Sure, on the, on the previous item, I apologize that I missed, I'm trying to add my vote and I'm voting no.
Uh, they were, uh, those were postponed to the September twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-five, please.
Yes, just, just writing the note for the executive session, sir.
Sorry, I just like to refer the last one, we're postponing it.
No, item twenty-four is going to be sent to the Chief Financial Officer and the Board of Assessors to call for a, uh, to get the information and ask the President to call for an executive session at one of our next meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item number twenty-five. Madam President, it's a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Matuski, that Mr. St. Louis appeared at the July twenty-seventh meeting to advise on leaders of garden and pool water meters that are available in other units, but maybe not in Everett.
Council Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I received a phone call from, uh, Director of Water Services Ernie LaRiviere today, and, uh, he filled me in on the, uh, usage of these water meters that were in effect here years ago whenever it, uh, for gardens and pools and whatnot, uh. But, uh, according to him, it's been phased out in Everett. And, uh, Malden phased it out. And, uh, you know, my concern was people that have pools that called me, uh, wanted to know, you know, why the water that goes in, then they're going to just drain it out anyway, you know, but, uh, there's no such program right now. And, uh, according to Mr. LaVer- LaVere, uh, they don't plan on putting it back. But, uh, he did mention that they have a, a rain barrel water collection device, you know, for gardening and so forth, which I plan on getting myself. Uh, and that, that program is active in this city through the, uh, Mr. Seuss's office, I guess. But you buy the barrel, but I'd like to, you know, I, I, I'd like to see, uh, that rain barrel collection device more publicized, you know? I mean, you know, when they rolled it out, I don't know, was it last year or the year before?
That's great.
Yeah, it was a good, a good idea, and I have friends that actually, uh, made their own barrels, but, you know, in that vein, you know, uh, people are trying to conserve water and the high cost. When they add the sewer, the water's not too bad, but the sewer's a part of it, when you see your water bill, you can get a little hairy. So, uh, with, uh, I'll refer this back to sponsor and, uh, I'll discuss with the mayor down the road about the, uh, promotion of these rain barrel devices and maybe they can put it on ECTV and do a little public relations with it, and I think that would help some people. Thank you.
Second motion.
Council Capone. I will, uh, respect that my colleague's wishes to refer back to sponsor, but I know some of us around communities have made this a very successful plan where they put a second meter into their home for, uh, purpose of summer activities. And they get charged at a different rate than Elrose does, and other communities that does it, so I respect my colleague's wishes, but I, I may put something back on the calendar of this sort in the future.
Do we have a motion to, uh, refer us back to sponsor, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
I think it's twenty-six, sir.
Excuse me, twenty-six.
Uh, item twenty-six is a resolution offered by Councilway Matuski, that EverSource eliminated the constant robocall being made to residents, to the residents of Everett.
Council Matuski.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, um. You know, uh, robocalls seem to be a big annoyances with people that I know, especially elderly people. I know of a woman, uh, who receives like three or four calls a day, and she went to answer the phone about a month ago, and it was somebody that said they were from EverSource. Uh, because she pays her bill on time, uh, blah, blah, blah. And as she went to answer the phone, she tripped over a chair and broke her hip. Okay, and this thing was recorded because she didn't get to the phone in time. But these robocalls are so annoying and so constant, and they're very clever, Mr. President. They'll put on, uh, the city of Cambridge, even the city of Everett. Now, I have a caller ID, which is very important, uh, with these robocalls, because you can actually tell, uh, that it's a phony phone call. But, uh, anyway, is EverSource part of National Grid, or do I miss something here?
Different company.
What do they, do they provide electrical service?
EverSource provides the same service National Grid serves in other communities.
Not in Everett.
Not in Everett.
Why would they be calling Everett residents that?
There are calls going out for, uh, in regards to suppliers who supplies the, the fuel for that.
Right, yeah.
I just recently switched and switched back because I got roped into thinking.
Yeah, my father did too, and the bill went sky high. But anyway, uh, we got that squared away, but robocalls, you know, I know Senator Markey had a big thing a few years back. And this council supported his efforts to try to eliminate robocalls and get fire. I get more now, myself and my neighbors and the people that I've talked to, than I ever have before. And I, you know, I don't understand it, you know? We're a small little city government here and, you know, I, I don't like bringing these things up, but, uh, you know, on our level, I, I don't know what you can actually do with these annoying phone calls. You know, especially to older people, Mr. President, you know? It's so mean and cruel. You know, and, uh, it just goes, it's not just, uh, utility companies either. I mean, we're talking about, uh, oh, they want to clean your chimney, uh, you name it. But, uh, I'd like EverSource to know, but as you said, you have to pick them to be a provider of your.
Supplier.
See, I get confused with that, uh, how that happens, but, you know, I have National Grid and I'm happy with them, but, uh, you know, I'm just, uh, a little bit, uh, concerned about all these robocalls, but at this stage of the game, I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll place another piece on the agenda down the road and refer to, uh, Senator Markey who was supposedly, or has done something with this. They supposedly fine people, uh, but, uh, I don't know where it's at at this point, but at this stage of the game, I'll refer this back to sponsor, seeing as you said EverSource doesn't actually, uh, supply electricity to residents here. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll refer this back to sponsor.
Second motion.
But my plan is to actually reintroduce this, maybe some other colleagues want to co-sponsor it, and let, uh, Senator Markey, uh, know that we're concerned about it. Thank you.
Council Markey, could you have your hand up? Okay, we have a motion to refer item number twenty-six back to sponsor, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven, Mr. Chairman. Is a resolution offered by Council Seven Ninety, that representative from the administration, channel various food distribution days in places in the city of Everett with the public to reinforce information already posted.
Council Markey.
So, um, I can't really suggest, like, Council Capone, and I know I'm not on camera, it's not wide enough, but, uh, so this is, is this the third time that this item is here? I don't know if the administration has something.
They, uh, they, they sent a communication for you with all the information.
All right, so I am, I am aware, but the purpose of this piece was for the, to have the administration inform the community with what we have? Because I go to the pantries and I still find people that are not sure. I can say myself aloud, or do you want to say it?
Yeah, we can read it.
That would be amazing. Thank you so much for doing that.
I just, uh, leave the piece, I, I actually don't have it on my desk, I'm sorry, now we're back.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So this is from the administration, uh, that will send this along. This is from, uh, Rhonda from the Health Department, she sent this along today. Um, Elliot Family, so, uh, this is, you know, request, Counselor. The Elliot Family Resource Center located at five forty Broadway, Maple Leaf entrance, Everett, Mass. Walk-up food pantry on Fridays from nine AM till eleven AM. Luma, located at one ninety Ferry Street. Walk-up food pantry on Fridays at two PM. La Comunidad, located at four seventy-one Broadway. Mail delivery to families in Everett, Monday through Thursday, in partnership with Boo Boo Restaurant. They have a list of fifty or so families who are experiencing food insecurity issues. Everett Grace Food Pantry and Outreach, located at fifty Church Street. Walk-up food pantry on Saturdays from nine AM till ten thirty AM. The Bread of Life Malden Food Pantry, located at fifty-four Eastern Ave in Malden. Food pantry on Wednesdays from four PM till six PM. And on Fridays from two PM till four PM. Free evening grab and go meals on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at five thirty PM at the First Baptist, excuse me, at the First Baptist Church, four ninety-three Main Street, Malden, Mass. Bread of Life Mobile Food Pantry. This is located at the Lafayette School, one seventeen Edith Street. Walk-up or drive-through food pantry on Thursdays at the Lafayette School parking lot from three PM until five PM. City of Everett Council on Edge, located at ninety Chelsea Street. Walk-up or drive-through food pantry at the Connolly Center on Wednesdays from nine thirty AM until eleven AM. Mail deliveries to seniors, Monday through Friday. Please call three one, three one one to sign up. Grocery delivery to seniors and Everett residents in need, i.e. quarantined due to COVID nineteen, unable to go to the food pantry on Wednesdays. Please call three one one if you are in need of this service. Everett Public Schools, food distribution for Everett Public Schools families starts on Monday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty, from three PM until four PM daily at Everett High School. The Albert and Palin School, Camerian School, Madeline English School, the Webster School, and the Whittier School. All sites will be providing breakfast and lunches. That is all.
Thank you so much, and my apologies, I don't think I received the email, but it's.
Yeah, it was, yeah, sorry.
But I appreciate you reading it, I appreciate Rhonda for sending in the administration and all these organizations and the administration has, they have been doing an amazing job with the distribution, the only challenge has been people finding out about all that's available, and that, so this is extremely helpful, so thank you, and I would just like to refer back to sponsor.
Second motion.
Council Matuski, a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, uh, I'm glad that Councilwoman Martins had actually put this on the agenda. I don't know of any city that does what the city of Everett does. Okay? I was in Everett Square last week, Madam, Mr. President. The line was from Church Street, the old, next to the old Everett Elks, all the way to the Bar C Sun. Okay? The cars lined up at the Connolly Center go beyond Ferry Street. Uh, I could go on and on, and then in the program that they have for the at-home elderly and seniors to deliver lunches is outstanding, which you get a medal. The people that do that job to deliver those meals to these people that are shot ends, and I guess there's over five hundred. My mother is included in that group. And a nice gentleman, a woman comes to your home with a lunch, and they're so pleasant, it makes their day. It, it takes the curse off of, uh, some of the extra things that people have to do on a daily basis, but I don't think anybody does what Everett does. And I, we've all seen the lines. It is amazing. And I have to give Everett credit, I really do, and that Luma, that little building on Ferry Street, I drove by there Friday, there was a line, three blocks long, out of a little garage, you know, and, uh, you're going to give these kind, these groups, uh, a lot of credit. And I do. And, uh, I'm glad that Councilwoman Martin actually, uh, put this on the agenda. But I don't think anybody does what I see in Everett. And I get around to the other communities, and I, I never see what we do here. Everett should be very proud of what they've done. Very proud, and the people that put these programs together should be proud of themselves, and I, I want to thank them for that. But I think this is great to, uh, distribute to the community. Thank you.
Does we have a motion to take item number twenty-seven, refer it back to sponsor, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number twenty-eight.
Councilor Capone.
Council Adrian, you had a question?
I just wanted to know, is everybody here for attendance?
There is a quorum here.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk, read item number twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Council Peter A. Paul Tannell that the city design a public service program to educate the public on proper disposal of masks and gloves.
Council Paul Tannell.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, you know, there isn't a street that you can go in in this city where you don't see masks on the street, gloves on the street. Uh, it's getting to a problem, and unfortunately, I've spoke to a few people, and their expectation is, well, the city will just pick it up. Well, we know that, especially in these tough financial times, you know, it's not the cities, the city is out there picking up stuff, but that's not their main responsibility. Uh, I think we need to start looking at ways of being able to get the community to start taking a look at the community themselves and be a part of the community. Uh, when I was a kid, we had all kinds of programs, you know, about, you know, picking up trash, don't litter, you know? Um, I think it's a good idea to go back in this direction. We've got to tune people back into having a little respect for their streets, for their, for their community. Uh, throw the trap, you know, throw the mask in, in the pit. And I think if we can send it, I'd like to send this to, um, you know, to Community Development. Perhaps they can reach out and do something in conjunction with the schools. Because again, it starts young, start teaching people young to have a little pride in, in their community, and it continues on, in, into their adulthood. You know, I mean, it could be something as simple as give a hoop, throw your damn max mask away. I don't know about you, but I've had it, I see them everywhere. People just don't care, and we've got to start getting, we need to stop bringing attention to that. If you're going to spend a little money to do it, I think it's worth the money spent. Uh, so I want to refer this to the, uh, Community Development. I'll reach out to them and I'll talk to them about reaching out to the schools, to see if we can get some type of program going.
Second motion.
I have a second to refer, item twenty-eight, do you read that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. But please read item number twenty-nine.
Item. Number twenty-nine, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Council Peter A. Paul Tannell that the Director of Health appear at the next city council meeting to provide an update on the current status of the city regarding COVID nineteen. Questions will be forthcoming.
Uh, Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I mean, we see a lot on the news, Everett's a high-risk community. Uh, we know from our, our, our Zoom meetings, uh, prior to this, that the, uh, the formula they use per a hundred thousand, uh, can have an effect on, on our numbers, and we're only, we're a small community of forty-five to fifty thousand. Hopefully the census will, 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 uh, you know, lay that out to be the case. But I think it's important, with everything going on, with the, uh, the steps the mayor's recently taken with the parks, that we, uh, we get some updated information. Uh, so I'd like to invite the Director of Health to, uh, our next meeting. I've already forwarded five questions, I'll share with our members right now. Uh, question number one, what is the total of COVID nineteen cases testing positive currently in year-to-date in the city of Everett? Number two, what is the mortality rate year-to-date of COVID nineteen patients and residents in the city of Everett? Three, with Commonwealth reporting a drop in the seven-day average positive test rate, what's keeping Everett identified as a high-risk community? Four, is the formula the state is using providing an accurate picture of Everett as a high-risk community? And five, as a high-risk community, what additional steps can the residents and administration take to ensure the safety of the community? So I'm very anxious to hear back from the Director of Board of Health. Um, you know, I've, I've had some personal dealings with her this past month, uh, in, in getting some of these tech, you know, getting testing results back. They do an outstanding job, very, very happy to report that, uh, my own involvement in getting tested and getting the results back in a timely fashion were, were outstanding. Uh, but I think it's time to, to get a public, uh, update for, uh, our members and our residents. So I'll refer this to the Director of Board of Health to, uh, provide us with a presentation at our next meeting in.
Second motion.
A motion, I have a second, is to refer item twenty-nine to the Board of Health with, uh, an invitation to come to our meeting, uh, September twenty-eighth, with, uh, we're just, I'm sorry, Counsel, with the, you want?
The answers to the questions that are already answered.
You don't want anything else with that, right?
Any other information they can provide, I mean, the, the fifth question is of a little more general nature, you know, what else can the community be doing that can provide discussion on show between ourselves and the Director?
Okay, thank you, Counsel. So item twenty-nine is referred to the, uh, Director of Board of Health.
Madam President, can we take items thirty and thirty-two collectively?
Both of us.
All. I was waiting to say.
Sorry, I was jotting the note down, so I, what's the test agreement?
So item twenty-nine is referred, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I have a motion to read items thirty and thirty-two.
Collectively, yes.
Motion is to read items thirty and thirty-two collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam President, items number thirty and thirty-two, orders offered by Council President Rosa DeFory.
Item thirty, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a special exception for Cal Power L C one seventy-eight dash one eighty Elm Street under Appendix A zoning section six A eight special exception. Item thirty-one, that the city council adopt the layout plan...
Not on net thirty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. Item thirty-two, sorry. Is that the city council hereby approves a special exception under Appendix A zoning section six A eight for six hundred Broadway owned by the six hundred Everett Elms.
Madam President. Thank you, Madam President, through you to our clerk. I think this is something we voted on before for another project, if I'm correct. I just want to make sure that what this is, is if there's a mixed use, commercial residential, it requires a vote by the council, just on that one piece, and then that's pretty much what they need from us.
Don't I present correctly, under the zoning one, it says for this moment, and it does require the city council to sign off on that last piece when you have the mixed-use commercial residential. If it was solely one or the other, you wouldn't.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
You're very welcome.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Madam President, I believe that we have some condition...
Don't speak into the mic, please, because I'm sorry, it's causing... I'm sorry, we're having a technical difficulty, but we'll get it straight.
Sorry, Madam President, I apologize.
In consideration, U C T V has done a great job, so...
Yep, absolutely, I apologize, sorry, Mr. McGlaughlin. So item number thirty and thirty-two, I believe we've had some invited guests wait on Zoom to speak with us this evening about these. I'm in favor of both of these, but if the individuals that have waited two hours to speak with us want to have the opportunity to do so, I think we should extend that invitation to them, and if they're okay with not speaking, I'm okay with voting for both of these projects. I have publicly supported both of these projects throughout the past year. You're the floor, I mean, Mr. Clerk.
That's fair, just so you know, all the information had been sent weeks in, one of them was sent maybe a couple months ago, because then during COVID, they took a little break from what they were doing, so council has received all the information. So, I mean, it is up to them, but I can try to talk to one of them now, I'm sure they'll be texting me. But they are here, just in case you had any additional questions.
No, then I vote for favorable action on both items thirty and thirty-two.
I would just recommend to vote on them separately, just in case they're...
So we're gonna vote on several?
Favorable action on item thirty.
Second motion.
Sure, I have a second, we'll call vote. Do we have enough, one, two, three, four, six?
Yep, no fair, Counselor Adrian does count it towards a quorum.
Yes, I understand, but I have to see, unfortunately...
Yeah, but I'm gonna call her name right now.
I know, I have to see the picture, because if I don't have a counselor in the chambers, they're in the back room, I can see that. Over there, I don't know if she's at the camera or if she's not. She could be away from a computer, she's in another room.
Counselor Adrian?
I'm here.
All right, Counselor, so you're...
We just wanna make sure...
First of all, so it's, this is to, I don't know if you heard, but this is for a special exception to allow the mixed-use onto development. It's to allow commercial and residential in these projects. So you would...
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So you have Counselor Adrian to allow the special exception on item number thirty?
We're voting right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. We need to ask you to go back.
Uh, yeah, so, no, I can't pass you, that would be...
We can't have...
We're in the middle of a vote, we're in the middle of a vote right now, so...
We do, we do, because she's on camera, that does count.
It does count, because she's on camera.
You don't have to have her in the chamber under the law, only, only...
She's six.
Yeah, she's number six on TV.
So...
But you count her, though.
Two, three, four, five, six.
Yes, that's a quorum. So, I'm sorry, Counselor Adrian, I have to take it first, because...
The number is just number thirty, right?
It's just the number thirty, this would be the one on Elm Street.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor... Hamlin, yes. Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor... Sorry, Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
And President de Forio?
Yes.
That would be six eight zero nays on item number thirty.
Favorable action on item number thirty-two.
Second motion.
I have favorable action, item number thirty-two.
Madam President, on the motions, on the...
It's on the majority, I'm sorry, I'm just... It's on the majority, number two, three, yes.
No, I just...
I just want to speak on item thirty-two, if that's okay?
I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, if I can just speak on item number thirty-two quickly, if that's okay? Madam President, we this evening have an opportunity to vote for a local business owner, somebody who has given his whole life to the City of Everett, Everett native, resident of our community. Thank you, Counsel, you're right, Counsel. Sorry, Counsel. Of course I have it, I apologize.
I didn't want to say it again.
No, I apologize. We have an opportunity tonight to stand up as a body and to support one of our own. An individual who grew up in the City of Everett, owns a business in the City of Everett, has given back tremendous amounts throughout this pandemic in the City of Everett. This individual cares about our community, is our community, and I'm proudly supportive of this item wholeheartedly, because I know the business owner that is going to run this business cares about our community, is our community, born and raised, is a friend of many of us in these chambers, and I would ask my colleagues to respectfully vote yes tonight for one of our own, to give him an opportunity to expand his already very successful business and to allow his business to grow in his community. So this evening, I stand proudly and ask my colleagues to support item number thirty-two so that our own can continue to grow in our community. That's what Everett's about.
Thank you. I, okay, you both put up your hands together, so I'm gonna...
I'll take it, who was it before?
Counselor Martin.
I just want to second my colleague's comments, you know, with Spirit Valley, they gave so much back to our community, especially during COVID, and I would love to see them expanding. I love their business model, I love how adaptable he is, I love that he's Everett, and I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you, Counselor Martin, Counselor Matouski.
Thank you, Madam President, I also rise in support of item number thirty-two. You know, we take one collectively, item thirty also?
Item thirty, we already voted on it, that did pass, so this is item one, item thirty-two, Counsel.
Well, you know, my only concern is in the future, item number thirty actually is a, in addition to a piece of property on Elm Street. I want to see how it works out for these, and there's another building on Broadway that has...
Well, Counsel, the only thing that we're voting on is the mixed use.
Right.
The...
Well, I want to make...
And everybody else gives them the okay to build the units, we have nothing to do with that.
No, we actually did vote on the unit part, too. We did on the building on Broadway, Madam President.
It's only for mixed, we only voted for mixed...
Right, but without the mixed use, you don't get the building, okay? So my theory here is, after these three buildings are done, which have, they've done all their paperwork and all the plans are there, I want to see how these buildings survive in a neighborhood with no parking. I, and down the road, after these three, you know, the, I don't know what you call it, next to the Palin School, okay?
Six oh five Broadway.
What's it called?
Six oh five Broadway.
Six oh five Broadway, and, you know, I wish these people very big success here.
I understand.
You understand. But I personally will not be voting for any building without proper parking. Okay, now, I just give you an example, you know, and I don't want to bend too far here, but Market Forge Property is gonna be six or seven hundred units. They bought a piece of property next door, the marble company, that, we've been there for years, and they created three hundred and seventy-five parking spots for that additional. Wasn't even supposed to be part of the plan. And they, this company that's building those apartments and restaurants and so forth where that vacant property is, bought the marble company to create three hundred and seventy-five parking spots. That's gonna affect my neighborhood, I'm only a block away. We're gonna see people jogging, and I could just imagine what's gonna happen in that little area. However, I want to know what's gonna happen on Broadway after these buildings are up, and I wish them the best of luck and success, because it's a new a new technology, we'll say, in the building trades. But I, you know, I just want people to understand that parking is very important and that, in my neighborhood, in any neighborhood in the city. I want to see how it works out. So I just want to let my colleagues know that from henceforth on, whatever the zoning board says or sends to us, I will not vote for anything until I see how these three properties progress with regard to parking. Okay, one building has thirty-seven spots for what, ninety units? I don't know. Another building has no spots for thirty units. And this one on Elm Street, which I did see the drawings, and it looked beautiful, and I did speak to some businesspeople in that area, and they're all in favor, and I know the gentleman also. I want to wish them the best of luck, but that's a smaller project, there's only five or six units on that one. But these bigger projects, I, really, you've got to remember that I, I'm not convinced that people... I'm not gonna have cars that move in here, I'm not convinced of that.
Counsel, the only thing that's in progress right now is getting nothing to do with parking, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
You're not interrupting, but without the proper vote tonight, that building doesn't go forward.
No, the building will go forward.
Without the restaurant?
Absolutely, it will go forward without the lights. So we have no jurisdiction over the building. We only have jurisdiction over if the restaurant opens, so I just want to make that clear.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, I want to wish the gentleman luck, he runs a great restaurant in the square. I've known him for many years, I know his family, and I'm gonna vote in favor. But I just wanted my feelings known on the other, you know, I don't want people saying that, you know, what's good for a person putting an addition on his house is good for a developer, that's all.
I understand, I understand the point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have favorable action, I do have a second, we'll call vote.
Okay. Item number thirty-two, favorable action, Counsel Adrian.
This is just for the restaurant, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's for the commercial component, correct.
Just for the restaurant, yeah.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yeah.
Counsel Matouski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
And President de Forio?
Yes.
That would be nine nays, zero nays, you have surpassed item number thirty-two. Item number thirty-one. The law offered by Council President Rosa de Forio that the city council adopt the layout plan for E F West Road as shown on the F West Road definitive subdivision plan dated January seventh, twenty twenty, approved by the planning board on February tenth, twenty twenty, and accept the F West Road as shown on such plan as a public way. The release and terminate the existing easement in the area and existing easement and accept the amendment of the grand easements from sixty-five Nomish Street L C executed by its, by it as of July first, twenty twenty. I believe we don't have all the information, so it was put on preemptively, so that way we'll be prepared for it. I don't have the rest of the stuff that I need from K P Law, so I'm just gonna ask you to lay it over, and I will bring it back. I know it's open to the next meeting, I don't want to have to, is that sound okay to all the counselors? I'll work with K P on that.
So the motion goes on to the meeting of September twenty-eighth?
I think it might be later.
Or due to October.
When we do the first meeting in October.
Yeah, and then if I need to bring it back before, I'll work with the president, is that, does that give it to everybody? Okay? I know this is a...
So the motion is to refer item thirty-one to the first meeting in October, and I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it?
Thank you. Item thirty-three. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Lee Matouski that the Everett Police Department place a speed radar monitor above Rock Street at the request of Resilience on Elm Street.
Counsel Matouski.
Thank you, Madam President. I spoke to Sergeant Gap on these matters, he's the head of the traffic department. And I received calls from P S A, they're coming from Malden on Bell Rock Street, and they're whipping through the neighborhood, and it's going all over the city. I don't know why people are so impatient these days. If a light turns green and less than a second later, somebody's beeping behind you. Revere Beach Parkway has turned into a raceway at this point. I don't know what's going on with the speeding in the city, but Sergeant Gap did call me, the parkway of course is controlled and supervised by the state police. But I'd like him to, he's actually placed a speed trap in this area at the request of two residents that called me. So I'll refer this back to sponsor, but I do want to thank Sergeant Gap for his efforts in controlling speeding in the city, it is really getting out of control. I don't know what devices people have on these cars that think they're cool or whatever, I mean, in my neighborhood, I know they can't go on every neighborhood in the city, you'd be arrested. There's a noise ordinance in the city. There's motorcycles, and it's just out of control. So that's another issue that I'll be placing on the agenda, if any of my colleagues would like to co-sponsor it with me. Counselor McGlaughlin has indicated he'd like to co-sponsor, I'm gonna put that on the agenda. These log vehicles and speeding vehicles are going insanely all over the city, and nothing seems to be happening with it. And something has to be done.
But if we remain to the subject, Counsel, I'm sorry, we have a lot of items tonight.
I understand.
I would really prefer that we remain...
All right, well, I just wanted to throw that out, because there was a piece on the last council meeting that referred to speeding and so forth. So I'll refer this back to sponsor, but I want to...
The motion is to refer item thirty-three back to sponsor, Counsel McGlaughlin, did you want to speak on the issue that's on the agenda, or?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, okay, so the motion is to refer item thirty-three back to sponsor. I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, the ayes have it?
Madam President, can we take items thirty-four and thirty-five collectively?
Second motion.
I have a motion to take item thirty-four and thirty-five directly, I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, but please read item thirty-four and thirty-five.
Madam President, items thirty-four and thirty-five, resolutions offered by Counsel Breaker Paul. Item thirty-four is that the Everett City, the City of Everett, excuse me, dedicate something of significance in remembrance of Dorothy Martin Long. Thirty-five is that the City of Everett dedicate something of significance in remembrance of Ambassador Walter Halter C. Carrington.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I know that many of us know Dottie, I don't know how many of us know Ambassador Carrington, but to the extent today my colleagues want to be added to this, I will amend it to add all my colleagues.
I would definitely like to go on that, I was gonna ask you, thank you.
Absolutely, so I make that call a vote.
Counsel.
Second.
So does anybody want to go on?
We all.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
All set, okay, so the motion would be, thirty-four and thirty-five is to amend it to add to the entire city council.
Second.
Second, I do have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it?
Thank you, Madam President. On the pieces, Dorothy Martin Long is such an amazing person. I know the school committee, I think recently voted to do something to remember her, but Dottie was so civic-minded, and there were so many different facets to her, that I think that we should be doing something on the city side as well. Ambassador Carrington, tremendous gentleman, very, very involved with many historical movements. Was ambassador to Nigeria, a couple of years back, some of the colleagues may remember, he was the grand marshal of the parade for the city. Spectacular person. So these are two very high caliber people who have left their mark in the City of Everett and should be remembered by this community. So I'm asking that we refer these items to the mayor's office, actually.
Second motion.
So items thirty-four and thirty-five is to refer to the mayor's office, I do have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, then you copy. On next week, I hopefully announced that Counsel DePereau had prior commitment. I don't know if I forgot to announce that, if I did, I apologize.
Madam President, to the extent, I don't know if Counsel DePereau has requested any information or action on this.
He's requested to refer to the next meeting.
Can we take items thirty-six, thirty-nine, and forty-one collectively?
Six, seven, and what was the other one?
Forty-one.
Thirty-six, thirty-nine, and forty-one, correctly, I do have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it?
Madam President, items thirty-six, thirty-nine, and forty-one, are resolutions offered by Counsel Anthony DePereau. Thirty-six is to declare the month of September as childhood cancer month in the City of Everett in memory of Ella J. O'Donnell. Thirty-nine is that the Veterans Square be dedicated in honor of Everett World War II veteran Frederick J. Gibson on the corner of Meadowview and Grover Street. And forty-one is where as the M B T A buses now have the ability to be raised alone. I respectfully request the administration consider removing the platforms in Everett Square.
Madam President, I ask if we postpone these to our next meeting?
Second.
So item thirty-six, thirty-nine is postponed to the next meeting, I do have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it? Counsel, please read item number thirty-seven.
Item thirty-seven. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Stephanie Mountains that the government operations and public safety committee be briefed in an executive session
that the government operations and public safety committee be briefed in an executive session along with the administration on the monthly law enforcement incidents occurring at Boston, Uncle Boston Out.
Counselor Mountains.
So, um, we have had a few major events since the reopening of the casino, but, uh, and those are the ones we know about because, um, well, most of our nine, our nine-one-one calls are related to incidents at the Encore and we know also that there are many incidents where folks are just escorted out, so we never actually get to know. But I wanted to propose that, and I would like to think that this is already happening between the administration and the police, but, uh, propose that the Public Safety Committee be briefed in an executive session on a monthly basis, on a law enforcement, uh, on an update on law enforcement incidents occurring at the Encore Casino. And this could be either myself as the chair, the members of the committee, and we can produce, um, a report and share with the council. So just, um, so it would be a monthly executive session meeting with the mayor, if, I mean, any member of the administration and the police to just get an update on incident at the Encore, so we're aware what's going on.
Okay.
So.
I was just straightening, I'm sorry. I was just wanting to make sure that-
I'm in the right place.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm in the right place tonight too. But, uh, so-
It doesn't have to be an executive session. That's what the question I was asking.
Well, I, I mean-
President, you can be with them.
Right. Alright, so as, um, so as the president, I can be with them and I can-
As the public safety chairperson, you can meet with them and you can give us the information that they share with you.
And the reason why I propose executive session is because sharing that information causes a public safety issue. So that has to be something that's shared in private and then shared with you all in private as well.
And that's why you can meet with them and then share it with us.
Exactly.
You can share with us. That's what I was trying to find out. I wanted to make sure. I was right before I gave you that information.
So I just wanted to, uh, propose that we have that connection where the council does receive information and I would love to be that channel where I'm hearing monthly what's happening and what kinds of incidents, the ones that are reported, the ones that have happened inside the casino that are related to, um, an actual record and, uh, and, uh, keep everybody informed.
Alright, does it, doesn't have to be executive session. I choose to be in an individual conversation.
Yeah, right, right. So it doesn't have, so we can amend it so it doesn't have to be an executive session?
So it's going to be that you're all going to meet with them individual and you're going to-
Report back.
Report back to us individual and let us know what's going on.
Yes.
Okay.
So if there is already something that happens where the police sits with the mayor or Encore sits with the mayor and they provide an, uh, summary to him, then I'd like to be a part of that. And if not, then we can just create that where I can meet monthly with the chief specifically on Encore incidents and I can share that report with the rest of the council, uh, without making it public.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Poe, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam, uh, President. It's an excellent piece. It's something that has concerned me for a little while. Any activity that happens down there should be public information. I don't think anything should be executive session on this. And I think it's something that should be provided for this entire membership. And I don't know how taxing of, of, of burden that would be on the police department to provide monthly updates. But if monthly updates aren't feasible, at least on a quarterly basis, I think this body in general should be getting updates on the activity that's happening down there. Uh, all of our constituents rightfully are concerned about, uh, activity. We all are. We've heard the news. We've seen there's been shootings, stabbings, et cetera. Unfortunately, that comes with the territory. So I think it's important that this body knows ASAP and this is not any kind of a, uh, stipend on a volley. I think it's an excellent idea, but I think rather than one person being a channel or conduit, I think this information should be shared with every single member of this community, uh, this, uh, body. I think it should be done on a monthly basis. If that turns out to be too much of a burden, I would say at a minimum, quarterly. We should know exactly what's going quarterly. And again, as this should be public information, I, I don't think that this needs to have any kind of executive-
I have the state police down there. So does everything come to the Everett Police Department? Do they also use state police?
So we have half state police, half Everett. And I actually wanted to give you the opportunity to also make the point that we need more police presence. Cause I, I'm not even going to disclose the numbers, but if you hear the number of police that we have there, it's unacceptable.
But they also have state police, that's what I'm saying. And I know that for fact because I saw them.
Together, I can count in almost just one hand, so it's unacceptable. So that's why I don't want to say the exact number, but we do have a combination, but we're fighting, we should be fighting with the casino and the game commission to add more. But I don't disagree with my colleague and I think that that should be the way, the only way, the only reason why I proposed it in executive sessions, because it's the business and it hurts the business if we're on camera disclosing certain-
They can give it to us and write it. It doesn't have to be on camera. They can, so what we can do is we can refer this to the police chief. We can ask him to give it, each one of us in writing. It doesn't have to be on the council floor, the report. If we don't like what's in the report, then we can bring it to the council.
He can provide the report to our clerk and the clerk can-
Yeah.
Send it to the members.
Yeah.
He just has to deal with one person.
So, well, one person. So he can refer it to the clerk and the clerk can give it to us. If there's something on there that we have questions on, then we can bring it to the council floor because it, sometimes, I understand it's a business, so we don't want to hurt them, but the people in Everett also need to know what's going on.
Absolutely. It's our duty to protect the people of Everett and the people that are down there. And I, so I don't have any preference of it being me and I'm, as long as we establish that there is this happening, then this, I'm all in favor.
So we refer this to the chief of police with, with, uh, a report monthly, if that's feasible, to the, to the city clerk and this, uh, to our admin.
Yeah.
To our admin and then our admin will, uh, distribute it to us.
So just a final point. So my only concern is that, and it's very unfortunate, and I don't know if that's, uh, if it happens because, because, because of business, but, uh, there are a lot of incidents that don't result in arrests. They, individual, individuals are just escorted out of the premises instead of being arrested for something that would have been an arrestable offense outside of the casino. So those things don't show in reports and that's why I wanted to sit down and like hear from the person. But if we can get a report, then it helps.
They can incorporate those too.
He can incorporate those.
Add those comments.
Okay, so is that okay? So the, is that motion okay, Counselor Martin?
It is, thank you.
And I do have a second from Counselor Poe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Good. Please read item number thirty-eight.
Item, excuse me, item number thirty-eight, Madam President's Resolution offered by Counselor Jimmy Trigley, that a Veterans Square be dedicated in honor of World War II veteran Joseph Penta on the border of Shu- Chui Broadway.
Counselor Trigley.
Thank you, Madam President. It is, um, it is my pleasure to sponsor this resolution this evening. Uh, I was hoping we can dedicate a Veterans Square in honor of deceased Everett World War II veteran, Joseph Penta, at the corner of Shu- Chui and Broadway. U S Army Private First Class Joseph Penta served this community and this country proudly during World War II, especially as part of the battles at Naples and Vojja, as well as Roman Arnold, which ultimately led to the liberation of Italy on the control of the Axis powers. And he is the recipient of the following World War II medals. Good Conduct Medal, American Theater Campaign Medal, Europe, Africa, and Middle Eastern Theater Campaign Medal with three bronze stars. And last but not least, um, a World War II Victory Medal. Now, this favorite son of Everett continued to serve this community as a police officer and held the rank of Police Lieutenant upon his retirement, uh, from the Everett Police Department after many years of service. Now, given the current circumstance, I'm hoping we can pass this resolution tonight and postpone the actual dedication to like, uh, sometime in the next summer as there's a backlog with these, uh, dedication due to COVID nineteen. Thank you.
So the motion? Uh, yes, Counselor Poe.
Through you to the, uh, to the sponsors. Is it Bobby Mendez yet?
No, it is, uh, Joseph.
The ice cream.
I think the, yes, yes. So I think we should, you want to go on?
Yeah, if, if, if the sponsor is, is willing to add the membership because I think all of us know the Penta family, uh, between ice cream and trash removal, uh, they're good guys that serve in the city and I think one of them actually works for the city as well. Uh, it's just not, so, uh, if, if the sponsor's okay, I'd, I'd ask that he-
Counselor Trigley, do you mind adding the entire City Council if they're all in favor going on this?
Oh, yes, of course.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so the motion would be, uh, to, uh, add to the City Council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. And then I have, what, favorable action? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, to refer it to the veterans. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Quick read, next item, item number forty.
Mr. Chairman, item number forty. It's a resolution offered by Counselor Rosa DeFlorio, that the city monitor construction projects throughout the city to ensure that they are compliant with putting out road traps.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have spoken to, uh, community development in regards to this. In the contracts, they're supposed to pay. When you break the sidewalks, they break the streets, they're not doing that. I've gone to numerous streets just to look. So, under the rule, I understand we're supposed to get a hold of the department heads, which I have. But I want to know what else we can do as a body to make them do it. It's in their contract. So, it's in the contract. We have an ordinance. So, we, we have an ordinance. It's in their contract. They're not doing it. So what's the next step? That's, that's my, unfortunately, due to COVID, a lot of restaurants were closed. So usually, you know, the mice and the rats, they're eating, they eat inside the dumpsters. There was nothing for them to eat. Now we're digging up streets, which is long overdue. I'm not, I, I'm not yet with them digging up the street. They do a great job. I appreciate it, believe it. Having new pipelines and having everything new. But we need to do something. We have to figure something out where maybe, maybe the contract is, gives us a certain amount for swift footage and we do our own thing. So I don't want to send this committee to work on something, uh, because we have no jurisdiction. It's in the contract, but if they don't do it, what do we do?
I think with the ordinance, I think, I think that, uh, it would get enforced by, uh, would it be court force?
That's what I remember and I think there's, I think there's a violation. Let's test it. I'm just trying to check the ordinance.
So there's a violation, there's a violation that obviously, that, that violation needs to be paid by now.
Needs to be enforced.
Yes, it, it needs to be enforced. So I'll refer it to, uh, to the code enforcement. But I still, I still won't know if it's being enforced is the situation. So do I get a report on it? Uh, I want to know.
I would, uh, my recommendation, Madam, uh, President, uh, would be to send it to the engineering department who handle the, um, you know, who send it to procurement, but engineering, both. In procurement, you can make any condition, uh, I'm sure in the procurement process and that if they don't pay, uh, they can be, uh, penalized for it, so that-
It is a contract that's charged back.
But I don't know if there's a penalty, uh, or assessed or if there's something, you know, there's ways to do things in procurement. And then also with the engineering department who oversees it because Mr. St. Louis and Julius, um, Mr. Fury, they, they monitor the, the projects. So I would, I would recommend sending it to them and asking if we're reporting back to you or to the entire City Council so that they will understand what has been happening and what will happen going forward. I mean, that would be my recommendation because they both handle-
Well, I want to go a little step further.
Sure.
When you do these streets, okay, I want code enforcement, whoever it is, Julius, whoever it is, I want him to take a picture of the traps and I want every street that's being done, I want that picture. And then we'll figure out what the, what the, uh, what the fines are after that. If there are no fines, then we should put them in. So, uh, I feel very strongly about this because with the baiting, I just wanted the sponsors to make sure this was done. And so, uh, so I'm going to refer it to, um, procurement officer. I'm going to refer it to code enforcement and I'm going to refer it to the city engineer. And I want pictures of every street that's being dug up, every sidewalk, and I want pictures of the traps.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Second. It's been moved in second to refer the matter to procurement, engineering department, code enforcement, with the request that pictures be taken to ensure that, uh, trapping is occurring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Quick, read next item, item number forty-two.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Chairman, item number forty-two is an order offered by Counselor Rosa DeFlorio. The Ever City Council have approved the following individuals to be sworn away as a district gas for year twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, you should have a list of them, sworn away as, uh, from district gas. This is an annual thing. Uh, the only reason it's being done now in September instead of April is due to COVID. It is only done as the months of April and May. Uh, and so, uh, everyone will be sworn in as district gas, uh, will handle, uh, monitoring that.
Who are the individuals? What number? I never find it.
There should be a list of them on your desk. Under-
Excellent, excellent generation.
Uh, there's about, uh, they're employees of excellent generations. They're required to get sworn in every year by, by-
Yes, we've done this numerous times.
Favorable action, yeah.
Favorable action for a second, second. This is a vocal.
Yes, it is. Uh, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Poe.
Yes.
Counselor Emma.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marcus.
Yeah.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
And if I talk, Counselor?
I know, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, I, I don't have the list of individuals.
I'm sorry. I was a disappointed, uh, I couldn't do this, sorry. Uh, Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Nine years, zero nays. You have best item number forty, uh, for the sworn away, uh, excuse me. Five, two, forty-two for the sworn away. Uh, item number forty-three. Madam President, resolution offered by Counselor Michael McGlaughlin, that the D P W director appear at the next government operations committee being to address the many tree stumps that need to be removed or brought down around the city.
I think it's a contract maybe with a certain hang.
I believe also, but-
Um, not advised of that. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Madam President, thank you. Madam President, uh, as, as we've all been around the city of Everett, I'm sure, um, we see trees being, uh, removed from time to time. But it seems like the gr, the stumps are never grinding out. It seems like, uh, across the city, there is probably every street in our community, at least one, um, two to three foot stump, uh, out of a sidewalk. And it just seems like they continue to pile up year after year. And it seems like it's an ongoing issue that just never seems to get addressed. They cut the tree down and they move on and they cut down the next tree. Uh, I know that we've talked about this in the past and they were going to bring in a contractor to, to grind these stumps out, remove them, fill in the, the patch and the sidewalk in front of somebody's home, but it seems like it never gets done. We talk about it and it just sort of falls on deaf ears. Um, so I'm asking that the D P W director, uh, give me a detailed list of locations where these tree stumps are and a structure of schedule of work, of when we can expect that these tree stumps are going to be grinded out and removed. Um, it, it's not only a public safety matter, but it's a cosmetic matter even also. I, none of us would want one of these tree stumps to be in front of our homes. Maybe some of us have had them in front of our homes in the past, but we should be working. I know it can't happen overnight, but we should be working towards a goal of removing all of these. Uh, so I would respectfully ask that the D P W director, um, give Mr. Mangan a detailed list of all tree stumps and a schedule of when we can expect to see them removed over a period of time. I know it won't happen in one day or one week, but let's work to get these resolved for the present-
So would you like that for your next, uh, next meeting?
Um, I, I, I think we can give him one month so that he has enough time to go around the city and collect a detailed list. Uh, so I don't want to, if he has it in two weeks, great. And if he doesn't, I'm okay with giving him one month. Uh, but I would like to see a completed list of across the city of tree stumps and a schedule of when they will be removed.
So the list would be, uh, the, what, the second meeting? Or the, the first meeting?
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth, right?
Yep.
October thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay. So item number forty-three is, uh, refer to, uh, director of D P W to give us a list of all the trees in the cities that need to, the stumps need to be removed and when they're going to be removed and, uh-
And when the sidewalks will be-
And when the sidewalks will be, uh, cemented.
Seven, two. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Quick read, item number forty-four.
Item number forty-four, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Stephanie Martins. Update on Everhous Task Force membership and meeting date.
Counsel Martins.
Madam President, can we create a quick motion for us to take items forty-four and fifty-five collectively?
Second emotion.
So the motion is to take items forty-four and fifty-five, Counsel?
Yes.
Collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
So, I'm very excited to finally provide an update on the housing task force, so this item was introduced
Wait a minute, let's have this clerk, please read that number fifty-five first, I'm sorry, Counsel.
Item fifty-five is the order offered by Counsel Stephanie Martins that the Seven Egan Park be, uh, Seven Egan Park be designated as a
So on the, uh, item number forty-four, Counsel Martins.
So the update on the housing task force. So this item, if people are listening for the first time, was introduced back in February, and I want to thank the council, Counsel President, the administration
Speak a little louder, please.
and the planning department for this report. I keep releasing, I don't project. But so, this was back in February, when we started having meetings with the, with the members and then polling it, and of course, we placed our legislative work aside, and industry is actually serving our residents with food masks, anything that was needed. Uh, as soon as we started meeting again in July and August, I started meeting again with the members, and we finally agreed on a date, which will be actually tomorrow at six thirty. It'll be an online meeting, that'll be live on website and EC TV. And I wanted to provide an update again on what it is and what the final membership, uh, came to be. So the Everton Affordable Housing Task Force will serve as a platform for housing discussion and incubator for housing policies and solutions. This involves all housing topics ranging from affordable housing to zoning changes, displacement, and new development. The task force will promote, will promote information, workshops, receive feedback from residents, provide feedback, and make recommendations to the administration and the council. This task force is charged with assessing the current and projected future landscapes of housing affordability in the city of Everett, evaluating current programs and initiatives to produce new affordable units and preserve existing ones, identifying resources and information that will reveal the depth of the housing issues in our community, setting metrics and goals, providing preliminary recommendations to implement equitable inclusive development strategies and displacement prevention. So the task force will meet once or twice per month, and applicable, with added workshops, distribution of materials, and online events. The meetings are public and open to all, and you can find the task force on Facebook at facebook.com/everthousingtaskforce. And, uh, so the page has been created. We'll start updating you with the bios and headshots of our members, and we're also on Instagram at Everhous Task Force. So the final membership, we have a one appointee that is a housing and, from a housing and tenant advocate organization, so that is Laura Rosie from Housing Families. A nonprofit housing development appointee, that's Rafael Maris from Neighborhood Developers. Uh, a representative from our business community, and that's David LaRuevere from Messenger Insurance. Effective persons from the community, a landlord, a tenant, and a senior citizen, so that is Mr. Sal Sacra as a landlord. We're ending a final meeting for final confirmation. Kayla Mangan as a tenant and an Everett resident. We know she lives with her father, but she's young, grew up in Everett. She can provide a different, um, point of view, and Mr. Charles DePerry, who's a senior citizen, former Everett Village Law president, and, uh, an, an appointee that's from the Urban Studies Planning and Development Expertise, that's Tony Souza, our director of planning and development for the city of Everett. Uh, leaders from local nonprofit social organizations representing the community, Lucy Pinera from Latinos Unidos of Massachusetts, Reverend Malon de Brogiers from Everett Asian Community Center, Liliana Patino from Elliott Family Resource Center, a representative from Everett's local housing authority, we have Dominic Julio from Everett Housing Authority, representative from the local healthcare system, we have Jean Greenwich from Cambridge Health Alliance, a youth homelessness advocate, Jonathan Regis from Youth Harvest. Uh, the city council presence appointments, you have appointed myself and Counselor Mark, Michael Marchese. The mayor has appointed Keith Slattery, our assistant solicitor, and we are finishing a school community appointment. But I'm incredibly proud, this is a a membership that is diverse in expertise, age, gender balance, racial diversity, and it'll be a combination of all different views and backgrounds to provide a balanced recommendation that reflects our community. So I just wanted to provide that update.
Very well done, Counsel.
Thank you. Item fifty-five.
Uh, let's, um,
Item number forty-four is
Just because it, it doesn't
That's yeah.
Sorry. It would be
Yes, for back sponsor, please.
Now, all the information is on the website that you gave us?
So that would be, uh, so the membership, yes, everything will be posted on Facebook, and, um, I believe we're working with the city as well to add a portion to the website.
Okay, thank you. So item forty-four, I have a motion to refer back sponsors. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Quick, read, item, you already read item fifty-five. Counselor
So item fifty-five was actually introduced back when we had our first remote meeting, and somehow we got lost. So I just want to refer to the Legislative, uh, Committee, where we have two other animal items pending, so we can here all alone, um, together for the meeting.
Second.
So what committee is this going to?
Legislative
Legislative affairs, I'm sorry. So I have a second. I have, uh, item fifty-five refers to Legislative Affairs, I do have a second. Uh, this says ordinance.
It is an ordinance, yes.
So, vocal. Oh, no.
No, you just refer
Sorry, I'm ready for you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Sorry about that.
That's all.
My real glass is broke, so I'm feeling what my focus that is not working that well. I know I didn't have to announce that, I'm sorry. It's a little technical difficulty, so I'm trying my best. Please be with me. We're grandma here.
Item number forty-five, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael Vlachman. That Mayor Timoriyan, Chief Maisy, Public Health Director Sabrina Cal, and CHA Administrator, here on the next government operations committee, need to discuss activity related to COVID nineteen.
Now, I believe that the same piece is Counsel Napoleon Tom, so
If I
I'm sorry, Counsel.
If I could just ask that she be removed from that, so she doesn't have a redundancy?
Yeah, I, I was, I was going to do that, because I, I apologize, I didn't see this until tonight, the, uh, first piece of Counsel Paul Tom. Along with, I would have called him and worked together
That's okay, I mean
in two items. Uh, but what I was looking for was, uh, and this is kind of predated through the parks closing, but I wanted to see if Chief Maisy or the police could pop ahead and enforce any, uh, ticket for individuals not wearing masks, and what steps we could take, so that we didn't have to get to the point of closing the parks. Could we hire park monitors and community ambassadors, and I know some of those steps have been taken since I put this piece on the calendar. I've also spoken to, uh, Christian Lefier, who is the site administrator at the hospital. He shared a tremendous amount of, uh, wealth and knowledge with me, which I thought could be helpful to my colleagues. Um, but again, not seeing the council piece, I, at this point, okay with even removing my piece, send it back to sponsor. Counsel Paul Tom will allow me to join his piece as a co-sponsor, uh, because I think they're both touching on the same topics in the same, the same item, but that's up to my colleagues.
As far as the parks go, uh, they're still playing sports. They only closed the tarp lots. They can still ride bikes. As long as they have masks. Is that my understanding, Counsel? I just want to make sure.
So, I have a lot of mixed understanding about the parks, because I go by parks, and I still see kids in there playing, and I still, so they're not locked up like they were back in the peak of the COVID nineteen. Uh, there is still families going into parks, uh, and playing, even at this point, I saw this afternoon. So, uh, this is the reason why I put this on, because I didn't want to have to close parks out again. I thought that if we got some community ambassadors, I know I spoke to you, Counsel de Florio, about this, and, uh, Corpinilio, and some of my other colleagues, uh, but the mayor decided to go to the extent of closing the parks. Uh, so I'll remove Sabrina, uh, from this item, so I make amends.
So the first motion would be is to remove Director Sabrina from the, from this list?
Yep.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
And then I would make a motion that we, uh, refer this to, um, Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service, and invite up the, these individuals, and, um, ask that the mayor give us as much, um, detailed information about parks and how we're implementing masks, and again, I, I know that this is some reputation to Counselor Paul Tom's piece, and I do apologize to him, I didn't try to step on his toes on the item. Uh, but I think that it's a point that we have as many conversations as possible, so that we can get out as much information as possible to our residents. Um, so I'd make a motion and refer this to committee.
Second.
Motion is to refer item forty-five to committee as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Oh, Counsel President de Florio, I think we, uh, uh, wanted to respond or something.
No, no, it doesn't need to make. It's the first piece, it's on the committee.
It's already gone to committee, so we're, I'm sorry. Uh, I do have my phone on, uh, so, oh, wait a minute.
Okay, all right.
We've already dismissed the piece, unfortunately. Sorry, Diana. Uh, I have no way of knowing if anybody wants to speak over here, because I don't see any hint. So, this is a trial and error. It's the first meeting, and I apologize to the viewing audience, or anybody else that wants to speak. Uh, yeah, so you can text me, and I'd be more than glad, uh, to call on you. So, Counsel. I mean, so do Corpinilio.
Madam President, item forty-six, a resolution offered by Counsel Gary Adrian, in terms of the Community Preservation Act, CPA, in the city of Everett. The Community Preservation Act, CPA, in Massachusetts, the law in GL, chapter forty-one B passed in two thousand, and enables adopted communities to raise funds to create a dedicated local fund for open space preservation, preservation of historic resources, development of portable houses, and the acquisition and development of outdoor recreational facilities. The fund generates monies for their local community preservation funds through the implementation, implementation of a local CPA property tax surcharge of up to three percent, and the receipt of annual matching funds at variable rates from a statewide CPA trust fund created by the act.
Counsel Adrian.
Um, so, one of the ways I'm trying to figure out how we can build more affordable housing in our city by generating funds is I've been studying the Community Preservation Act, which is also known as the CPA. And what I found out was that fifty-first item of all the cities that's housing in Massachusetts already has passed this. And so, again, doing my research, the fund would support either the open space, um, historic resources, or a development of portable housing, which is really needed in Everett, and outdoor recreational facilities. And so, I'm just noticing that we have a mission in our city, which is the need for portable housing, not just for seniors, not just for veterans, but for everyone, particularly, uh, you know, people who has been here in our city for like five, ten, fifty, twenty years, and this would be a way to help support that. The way that this gets passed, though, it has to be voted on on ballot, and so I'm hoping that we could take, you know, the next three to six months to work on this, so that it could be on the ballot for next year, specifically for next November. Uh, so I'm in no rush to, to, to pass this, but I really want this to be a collective effort. I did speak with State Senator Southie Menel, and Southie Menel is actually one of the champions for the CPA. Um, he told me he has, uh, he's been talking about this for a year, and hopes to get this passed in Everett, and he hasn't heard a conversation about it. So he was excited that I brought it up, and so with his support, uh, I'm hoping that us collectively again can pass this within hopefully the next year, so that it can be voted on by the voters. But again, for me, I'm hoping that this whole fund is a powerful housing. And so, uh, I have a question before I make my motion.
Second.
Counsel President de Florio, anything housing related, is it supposed to go to the Housing Task Force? Or, because I don't want what happened last time, where I sent something to the Legislative Affairs, and then it got sent to the Housing Task Force. I just want to know where, like, one place where it's supposed to go, and then it gets back to the committee. I mean
It, it really should go to the task force, but it's up to you. I'm not gonna, uh, it, it's what you prefer, but, uh, that's why we put a task force together, so that, uh, we can work together to find out the issues and what we can do better in the city.
So To the task force, and then it will come back to the council?
Well, you could, you could, you could send it to the task force and ask them, uh, ask them to, uh, give you, uh, an answer back within a month, two months, uh, they can invite you up to the task force to speak. You, you can go to the task force. It doesn't mean if you're not on it, that you're not able to go there and make recommendations. So you can ask them to invite you to the next meeting, or you can refer to them and, and give them thirty days, sixty days, whatever you want to give them to get back to you. That's up to you.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to send this to the task force and, um, to provide a recommendation. Um, am I supposed to give the timeline now, or do I let them know when I go meet with our
Ask them to invite you up, so that you can, uh, give them some recommendations, and then, uh, if it comes, if the task force hasn't met by the next meeting, we can, you can always postpone this to the following meeting. So it doesn't matter, you know what I'm saying? So you can give them whatever, you can put it to the first week in October. If they don't meet by the first week in October, and this shows up again, you can always postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay, so I will make a, I'm asking for a motion for this to be, uh, set to the Housing Task Force, to be discussed on Sunday. I believe the next meeting could be after tomorrow, and I also advise State Senator Southie Menel, because it seems like he will also join the A at one.
Okay, on the motion, I have two hands up. First one's Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, through you to the sponsor, uh, all very important issues in the tax surcharge. Is this on real property, personal property, or both?
Is the, is the, you said the what?
Is it real property, personal property, or both, that's being assessed additional?
That's being
Tax.
As an end.
The surcharge, the three percent surcharge, is that correct, Counsel Capone, that we were talking about?
Correct, yeah.
The property tax surcharge of three percent, you want to know?
It's a property tax.
Yeah, it's option property.
Okay, so real estate?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, so
Like your house, for example.
Right, right. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the thought. I think these are all things that are important. The last thing I want to do is raise anyone's taxes. All I've tried to do since I've gotten office is bring taxes down. Uh, what I would like to see is, when this goes to the tax for, task force, perhaps we can accomplish these purposes within the existing tax budget. We just have to better spend our money, get a little bit, uh, tighter with some of the things we're looking at. And rather than an additional surcharge, I would like to see these items being funded within the existing budget. So, uh, I'll, I'll second your motion to send it to task force, but that's where my personal preference would be.
I have two other speakers. Counsel Martins.
Uh, so, Ma- Madam President, through you, I just wanted to, uh, provide some information. So we do have an item that belongs to, uh, Counsel Adrian that's being heard tomorrow, that that recommendation will come back to the council, whether it's favorable or, and then it's back to the council. For the next meeting, we do have two items on the agenda already, that kind of accomplish what Counsel Capone just said, which is the linkage fee and the Everett Housing Trust Fund. But, uh, so the meeting after the next, we can accommodate the CPA, which is also an item that was coming up just for informational purposes. We have a whole list that I can provide to the council as well. But, uh, so, I just wanted to say that for the, so we have a meeting tomorrow. The next meeting, we already have two items. I'm not sure if we can do all three in one meeting, so it might have to be the one after. But we're not, we might not meet monthly, we might have to do it bi-weekly, just to get all these items out of the way. So try to make it happen in October.
You guys. Well, the counselor said she wasn't in a hurry, that, that, uh, this is not going to go on the ballot in like a year, so she's willing. So whenever you, whenever you refer it out, it's fine.
So the next two months, so right after the next meeting, that we have linkage fee and the housing trust fund, then we're gonna accommodate CPA.
Okay, thank you. Counsel McGlaughlin.
Madam President, thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question, which is that these recommendations that come out of the task force come back to the city council?
Yes.
They're just recommended by the body, correct?
We're not
So they will come back to the city council? And I will talk with, uh, Molly Promore too, and ask her how to get, uh, involved in, uh, this, in, here in these, here in these meetings. So I don't know if they're gonna be on Zoom, or if they're on Facebook Live, but she'll, her and I will work together to make sure that I can participate in, attend these meetings. Thank you.
Okay, so I
Oh, I, I put it here, and what did he say?
He just wanted to know when the meetings were gonna be. He's gonna work with Counsel Martins on, uh, finding out, finding out meetings.
So the motion is to refer it to the task force with an answer back?
Can I, can I answer, Counsel Capone?
Go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so Counsel Capone, uh, we all Okay, uh, so Counsel Capone, uh, we all would love if the city budget funded housing from its current budget.
It can do it. It can do it. It can do it.
But I, I just want to say that the, the reason why the CPA is so special and unique is that the state will actually point that and provide us funds. So that it's not because us alone as a city doing this, it's just that the state will actually help fund that for them. So, like, when I was talking to Senator South, he was saying, well, we've left over in the state budget, they send it over to the people who have CPA passed in their state. So when we think about how much funding could actually help, like, in terms of affordable housing, like, our neighborhood cities, like, malls in Cambridge, like, everybody has this. And so, I just want you guys to think of, or you to think about, like, this is a benefit. And I don't want to see anybody's taxes go up, right? Like, I'm against that a hundred percent. But I do want to, um, work with our mayor, right? In terms of, like, how do we get this to work? And so that the taxpayer do feel comfortable for them, right? So, for example, like, I know the city of Austin, the first time they passed this, it was like one percent. One percent of their property taxes, and when they averaged it out, it was like an extra fifty dollars a month. When they actually averaged it out from every...
Well, fifty dollars a month is six hundred dollars a year, Counsel. I'll do this fact, there's some seniors that just can't afford that.
But I just want to explain it, so...
Okay, no, I understand that, I, I understand, I'm not trying to interrupt you in any way, but I'm just saying, when you're saying fifty dollars a month, it's six hundred dollars a year. And there's people on fixed income that can't afford that, so we, that's fine.
Right, when you think about how many houses, and I was so confused, when you think about how many houses there are in the city of Austin, right, to have to cover, but then, when you're thinking about how much money they have and how many people they were able to help with what they're going to decide to do, there's a committee that is formed and they decide where the money goes. Like, I think that's amazing, but again, I want to work with every council on this, I want to work with everybody, and this would have to be voted by everybody who votes. And so that's why I think I would like it to go to the November election, which it has a higher number of voters, which would have a lot percent.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, send item forty-six to the task force with an answer back, Counsel, what? Uh... Sixty days?
Sixty days.
Uh, sixty days.
Second the motion.
On the favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have. So please read item number forty-seven.
Item number forty-seven, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Adrian to request the Housing Task Force a status update on the creation of the task force, the path for more homeownership in the city, and a public hearing to support tenants facing eviction slash displacement.
Counsel Adrian. Counsel Adrian, item number, uh, forty-seven.
Yeah, so since we heard from Counsel, uh, Martins today about a status update, um, and she said that she was gonna put this on the website, the only recommendation, uh, Counsel Martin, is that that we could see, um, an actual path for people to have more homeownership in the city. I have been speaking with Tony Susan about this, and so I just hope this is one of the focus on the task. And so I would refer it to me and hope that she would consider in her task.
So the motion is to refer, item forty-seven back to the sponsor, who I was second. Second. On the favor, on opposed, the ayes have. Good, read item number forty-eight.
Madam President, item number forty-eight is a resolution offered by Counsel Adrian to create the mayor's office CFO to create a waiver on how to reduce or eliminate taxes or fees for one hundred percent affordable housing development projects through an exemption or other means, and investigate what types of real estate tax abatements are possible for one hundred affordable, one hundred percent affordable housing moving forward.
Counsel Adrian.
Right, so, um, you know, again, we have a lot of affordable housing in our city, and when I, I've had this idea, and I've seen this in other cities where, um, when developers come in, the city will provide some type of tax benefit or tax payment, or, uh, the way some type of fees. Um, so for example, in Cambridge, they were trying to push that, they were waiting to determine. And so that's why I could use our taxes for creating a tax payment, because I'm open to any idea, but we know that there's been so many developers who are continuing to come into our city, and yet you don't see the affordable housing that we have. And so, if we can provide some type of benefit where developers, when they do come in, because they're still coming in and they're not, for me in my eyes, they're not building enough affordable housing, I'm hoping that we can pass something, and it doesn't have to be exactly this, but something where we encourage people to come in and build more affordable housing. I had a conversation with the mayor last year in person, and the first idea I proposed to him was that where if they build, you know, for example, like, one floor, and whatever that equipment was, say, one floor with ten units, which was more than our minimum, could they receive some type of tax break? And he said he liked the idea. And so, uh, I'm hoping with this, again, this is something I could give work in progress, but I'm hoping that something could be passed, could be encouraged for affordable housing throughout our city.
So what is your pleasure on this, Counsel?
And by saying that?
What did you, what's your motion?
Yeah, so my, so my motion was to move this to the mayor's office, like, Tony Susan.
Second.
So you want to refer this to the mayor's office and Tony Susan, and I do have a second. On the favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Did you say Tony Susan, I'm sorry, I heard Tony Susan.
Yeah, Mayor Thomas Stanfoss always called us, and then they would come back and let us know what they can or can't do.
Okay, so I have a second on that, on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have.
Thank you.
Item number forty-nine, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Adrian to request if ISD can be given the authority to issue citations for smoking in non-smoking buildings and to report back to the city council.
Uh, so, I, we have this, um, I received a letter from a resident, I would be smoking stuff, and in the pres- in the letter, the resident noted how, um, in the building, people were smoking, um, downstairs in the lobby, and she said that, she spoke, you know, she spoke with one of our elected officials about it, and they said they couldn't do anything about it. So in my eyes, I was just wondering if there was a way to request ISD would be able to give the office authority to issue citations, would she move our smoking in non-smoking buildings? And let us know if this is possible.
I would, uh, if you're, you're on my counsel, I would refer this to the city solicitor and request her opinion. If you, if you could refer this to the city solic- are you having a problem hearing me?
Okay, now I hear you.
If you could refer this to the city solicitor, I think it would be a better idea, but that's up to you. She can give a recommendation on what the law is, what the law isn't, and then she can refer it to ISD to get, to go there and...
What is response back to Counsel?
Okay.
And then he would, and then he would come back to the council, let us know?
Yes.
Yes. So we can refer it to the, uh, city solicitor to find out what the rule is and to refer back and, uh, give us an answer back, uh, to the council our next meeting.
Second the motion.
Is, is that okay?
Yeah.
He said okay. He said okay.
So I have a second, on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have. Sorry. Anyway. Good, please read item number fifty.
Number fifty, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Adrian to request the mayor's office to implement a water discount program of twenty-five percent to low-income individuals surviving, whether the residents who live in their homes as their primary residence.
Counsel Adrian.
Yeah, so I, I talked about this in the video that I made, the numbers are three issues that I'm getting from residents. Like, I talked to today related to the water. Um, and Counsel Matuzki, I know that the resident reached out to you about the water and she tangled it. Uh, but I told her about this idea, and she liked it as well. So I've had a few, a lot of people who are interested in this idea, but basically it's the water discount program. I reached out to the new ones that care about our current program, and our current program only serves seniors and disabled. And so what I wanted to do was increase it to low-income individuals, surviving bills, and residents living their homes as their primary residence. Uh, we know we have many noise in our city, um, and we also have people who own their own primary residence, there's like the tax deduction, some hold that they're hurting, get, 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 for their water. So my motion would be to refer this to the mayor's office.
Water. Yep. Correct, city services, city W permission.
So the, uh... Refer, I, I'm sorry, item number fifty to the mayor's office. On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have. Good, please read item number fifty-one.
Item number fifty-one, Madam President.
So Counsel President Florio, related to work, but I just got it.
I'm sorry, Counsel, it, yeah, can we please have the city clerk read it first?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Thank you, item number fifty-one.
Is a, uh, resolution offered by Counsel Adrian to request what is the city doing about the citywide rat issue that's being caused worse by development around the city? Is there a way the city can help homeowners to exterminate rats?
Counsel Adrian. It's, it's been like...
So I received, um, multiple, um, issues from residents as well about the rat. Um, and I didn't know, Counsel President Florio, if this is related to what you brought up earlier?
Yeah, it is, it is kinda, and I had, I, I did get, um, complaints myself. Uh, so, I did speak to ISD in regards to another area that I was called on, but I just want, uh, like I said, they're digging up the streets, so there is a problem. And so, it is the same, so it's up to you, would you like to do with this piece? Or would you like to add your name to the piece that I put on? It's, it doesn't matter to me.
And where, and where is your piece coming?
My piece is going to, uh...
Engineering?
Engineering.
ISD.
ISD, and...
And procurement.
And procurement officer.
Okay, um, I can add that, if, if you know what a timeframe is?
We give them one month.
We give them one month.
To respond in writing.
To respond in writing.
Okay, um, I'm fine with that, okay, yeah, we can add it.
So we'll just tie this in with the obvious.
Tie in what this might be, and I believe this is another question for Counsel Martin, did you have a question?
Yeah, so, on the motion, if I can just provide a little suggestion, I don't know if that can go with the piece? But, uh, I would say the part of the problem as well is the limited bin space, that we don't have enough, and the fact that we might need, how do you call those move-out dates when you put the truck? We used to have those in Everett, where you can just put your, you can empty your basement and just leave yourself out.
Oh, the spring cleaning, or they, yeah.
We didn't have more of those, that would have helped to free up space in people's basements and would kind of help with the rat situation.
Believe it or not, they did this all through the COVID, for four, five months, they charged anything. They could throw anything away, so, if anybody called and asked to remove something, they...
So I think it just wasn't publicized enough to why people have to...
Okay, so you, huh, so you're saying to have more cleaning so that it doesn't cause...
Well, no, to, to continue that process, or to have more, not just spring, but just like have it twice a year maybe, and, uh, and just make sure that people know about it so they take full advantage of that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, thank you, Counsel Martin, Counsel Madoff.
Yes, uh, I mean, there's a couple of things to be aware of with the rat situation here. I mean, there's some members who've been here who I don't know, who work, I've been actually dying away just for two years, and the plan was for this year to have the city go out and do some exterminating. COVID-nineteen changed those, those, those plans. But, uh, the rat issue is gonna be, is gonna be reduced as the weather changes. This is a seasonal problem, we usually have a high, high concentration in the spring and right up until October, but then as it gets cold, they start disappearing. So the thing is that, the idea here, as was last year, was to be pre- be prepared to act on this when the season starts up again. You know, some of you had me make the joke of if you trained the coyotes, eat the rats, we'd be all set, but that's not the case. Uh, so this is a longer, this is a long-term problem, uh, one that some of us have been working on for quite a while. Uh, there was plans to do some action on it this year, but that, that, that got hung up with COVID-nineteen. So, the situation has gone, has run its course. You know, as I've always said, putting out flyers, telling people to do this, that's not the solution because we've been doing that for years and it hasn't changed the problem. So, uh, I think we need to revisit this, I think, I agree with where you're gonna send it, uh, but there definitely needs to be a, a, a deeper plan of action, uh, for next year when the, when the rat season, so to speak, resumes. Because they'll hibernate through the winter, you're not gonna have a problem with another few months as it gets cold. That's really all I wanted to say, this is not, this is not a, a, a new topic.
Anybody else have one?
Yeah, and just, and just a reminder, there is ordinances in place for building, construction and stuff like that, so if we utilize the ordinances already in place, Counsel McKenna, they drafted it a few years back, we utilize those, all of this is enforcement issues really on some of these, that would make it better anyway, uh, especially with those large proj- projects. So we, you violate, you know, if you violate those ordinances, one day you can have that fine structure in place, just so you know.
Okay, so we're gonna combine item fifty-one with my item, uh, and refer it to the, uh, same...
Yep.
The department, response back in writing, one month. On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have. Good, please read item number fifty-two.
Madam President, item fifty-two is a resolution offered by Counsel Adrian to report on the history and the concerns from neighbors around Waterdow on the history of the Coleman manufacturing issues related to the trucks that surround the neighborhood to provide insight, status from the business operations if they are still functioning. When does the truck supply come in and to look at the possible recommendations to make the first pot of water from Waterdow to Main Street? A note trucks allowed, to allow trucks to only enter in from Windsor Street to Valley Street and Eiffel Road down to Tremont Street to Valley Street. Last recommendation to include trucks only allowed at a particular time.
Counsel Adrian. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, are you on mute or...
Um, I had a resident who was gonna speak at public, uh, participation, it wasn't due, it was planned that I offered to get off, but she called me in regards to this issue, she lives on Waterdow, and she says that the trucks, uh...
Quick second.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yes. Did you want to postpone this to our next meeting so we have the public participation? So it's gonna go to Traffic Commissioner. So we can refer this to the Traffic Commissioner, Counsel, and you can still have your constituents come up to do public participation next time. We have no jurisdiction over this, they have a, a separate, uh, Traffic Committee that takes care of this pro, uh, uh, of this, of this item. So the best thing to do is call, uh, Officer Gaff and refer this to the Traffic Committee.
Okay, so the reason why I brought it to me was because she actually called City Hall, and somebody from City Hall told her to bring it to the council committee.
Well, yeah, that's all right, it's all, yeah, that's good. So she brought it to you, and you, you brought it to the council, and you refer it to the Traffic Committee, and act, uh, and ask them to act on this with, uh, with an answer back in a month. Counsel Madoff.
Thank you, Madam President, on this motion, just quickly so that Counsel Adrian knows that I already have spoken...
Stick into the mic, please.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize.
I was trying to take your attention.
Sorry. This has to be addressed by the state, the state deals with traffic, uh, routes, uh, truck routes, excuse me. And I've already spoken with the state about this matter, uh, but it's not the Everett Traffic Commission that has jurisdiction over truck routes. It's the state that has to deal with truck routes, and that already been in the process of talking with the state of Massachusetts regarding, regarding this. So I just want her to know...
We start to send it to Traffic, and they're the ones that have the enforcement to send it to the state.
Okay.
They work with the state, is what I'm saying, so you better...
Yes, sir.
We're not gonna send it directly to the state, we're not gonna get anything out of it, so if you send it to Traffic, they will work directly with the state to enforce it.
But what I'm saying is that Traffic could already send something to the state with my recommendation several months back. But that's fine, but I want her to know that it comes out of the state, that's the city traffic.
Thank you, Counsel.
Just so she's aware.
Okay, so Counsel Adrian, did you understand what we were saying? Are you hearing what we're saying?
No. No, I'm hearing everything.
Okay, the state takes care of the truck route, okay? So for us to call the state direct... So for us to call the state directly, I don't believe we would get action as fast as the traffic committee getting in touch with them. So the recommendation is to send it to a traffic committee and have them get in touch with the state, so this can be resolved. Is that understandable? I feel like I'm yelling.
Yes, that works, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to send item number fifty-two to the traffic committee, with, uh, with them to work with the state in regards to this truck route. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out.
Madam President, item fifty-three is a resolution issued by Council Adrian. To request State Senator Salve de Mexico and State Representative Joseph McGonigal to update the city council on what the state is doing to work on tenant-related protections from COVID-19 future evictions, to also include an update on the new pilot program.
Counsel Adrian.
I believe we still have, this is still in...
Yeah, so I would inform that State Senator Salve de Mexico, um, the State House, they have this new pilot program that's supposed to potentially help tenants that are, you know, impacted by COVID and any future evictions. And so I thought it'd be great to invite both our state allocations, so that they can, um, let us know what is happening, so we can also form our...
Invite them to, uh, a committee, or the council as a whole?
Whether the council is whole, but not to the next meeting, to the, um, to the meeting in October, the first meeting in October.
Second motion.
On the thirteenth. So the motion is to refer this to council, did you men, did anybody, I'll tap their hands up, I'm sorry. Did you have hands up, Counsel Martin?
Through you, I was just wondering, is this the rights of council, because the South will present that as a task force, the rights of council bill? Where you receive an attorney, where you, you will have an attorney represent you if you're a tenant facing eviction in housing court. So I just wanted to ask through you to be, um, sponsored that the, uh, the help that you're referring to.
Did you get that, Counsel Adrian?
Yeah.
It'll come back, it'll be also at the task force, there will be a presentation by Sal on the rights of council bill that we spoke to you about.
I would like, I would like it to still come to the council, I'd like to hear more on that, on that bill as well.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that on the thirteenth, we don't have any items on the agenda that we can ask the white questions and spend time with, uh...
But I think that's a important bill, Madam President, that the residents, if they're not able to get onto Zoom, that they will want to tune into to hear. I think there's, in the future, gonna be such a demand and a need for that service, that I think that if they're not able to get onto Zoom with the task force, that they will be able to, uh, hear directly from the senator on that bill.
Yeah, I agree with you, Counsel McGrawson.
Sorry, just adding, so, um, while it's on Zoom, it's going to be online, but I agree, it's helpful to have both of them, so we can ask about everything else and all kinds of funds that we're supposed to be receiving as part of the program as well. So never mind, forget that.
Okay. So right now, this is Counsel Adrian's piece, and she's requesting that State Senator DeMeco, State Representative Joe McGonigal, go to come to our October meeting on the thirteenth to explain the, uh, eviction notice, future eviction notices, uh, to update us on the new pilot program. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out. Court, please read item number fifty-four.
Item fifty-four. Madam President, is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request an update on what the mayor's office is doing to cope with legal aid for tenants.
Counsel Adrian.
So I would like to super request an update, and the mayor is planning, the mayor's office plans to be making assistance with legal aid on tenants. The city boss of the mayor just came out in support of something like, uh, very similar, so I didn't know if our city was gonna do anything, but that's my...
I believe the task force is doing something like that. They have an attorney, uh, to help the, uh, tenants. The, uh, the task force...
Sorry, so our...
I'm sorry, let me ask Counsel Martin, I'm gonna get that straight, 'cause I met her a few times, but...
Thank you so much.
Nothing was finalized, so...
What we have been doing, and, uh, we have been able to mediate conflict and assist and allow a lot of tenants to be able to stay that were facing out-of-control situations to the point of harassment, is that our assistant city solicitor actually himself reached out to the landlord to inform him of the loss, and, um, that was able to, uh, settle the situation. So I'm not sure if the item here is in regards to a specific program where we'll have, like, separate attorneys, but this is what the mayor's office has been doing, which has been working and it has been extremely helpful, and I wanna thank our assistant solicitor for doing that.
So it's basically more like a mediator between the landlord and the tenant?
Yes, so it's interesting, because there are different resources, so I have, initially, I was reaching out to the, um, Attorney General's office, and the city life, but the situation became more immediate, and then it was more effective to just have the attorney call them, and it was, um, and we were able to solve like that. But the task force does have now a partnership through actually our committee member wearing his Attorney General's hat, uh, that they're launching a program in all different languages where they're going to be, um, providing a lot of assistance in terms of eviction and tenant help, and they will present to the task force, to an online, available to everybody.
So Counsel Adrian, is it, when you're saying you wanna request an update on what the mayor's office is doing to help with legal aid for tenants?
So Deanna and all, and so Deanna said she has a response, so I'm gonna make a motion for her to respond.
So I have a motion to have Deanna respond, so I have a second?
Aye.
She wanted to talk.
It's a resolution, though.
Yeah, second, it's fine.
Normally on the new business council, we don't do this, but I don't want, no, no, go ahead, I took a vote and it's okay. But I just want you to know in the future, uh, I understand Deanna wants to speak, and I don't wanna the second time, the night, so she can speak. I took a vote on it today.
It is getting, and you're breaking the rules.
Yes. So Deanna, you're on.
Hi, everyone, good evening. Uh, thank you for having me speak. I'll be in the room by the end. Today, uh, the mayor's office announced a four-hundred-million-dollar program to help in business owners. We are currently working with A&amp;F, uh, administration of clients, the governor, to develop some sort of rental, will be programmed, um, for the city. Along with that, we're gonna be proposing to receive additional funds for A&amp;F for when the moratorium on rents lifted to give tenants legal aid somehow, some way, uh, so they can save money. So that's my very call.
Thank you so much. Counsel Adrian.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't want to remove Deanna for the second time, but it is against our rules, just so you know. Go ahead. What's your pleasure on this?
Thank you, uh, I would refer back to sponsor.
So the motion is to refer, uh, item, what was it, fifty-four, uh, back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out. Court, please read item number fifty-six.
Item number fifty-six, Madam President, is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request the mayor's office to help procedures for the 2020 Halloween evening in safe...
Counsel Adrian.
Yeah, so as we know, October is coming up, and, and then kids go out, and so I was just hoping that the mayor's office could develop a procedure and let people know, so that they can have a safe Halloween, or in places that are gonna be rainy, and so they can let people out. So my motion is to send this to the mayor's office, and we should come back to the council, so the mayor's can update.
So refer this, item fifty-six, to the mayor's office with an update. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out. Court, please read item number fifty-seven.
Item number fifty-seven, Madam President, is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request the city council to conduct all council committee of the hall and subcommittee meetings virtually till the coming of the Massachusetts Independence Day floor reopening to protect the safety and anticipation of all vulnerable and individual compromised community members.
Counsel Adrian.
I'm sure I refer it back to sponsor, and while you're like, it's a thing you can do, I will refer it back.
We were just having difficulty getting things together, that was all. So the motion is to refer item number fifty-eight, uh, fifty-seven back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out. Court, please read item number fifty-eight.
Uh, Madam President, item number fifteen is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request the human resources director to report to the city council within thirty days of diversity of city staff, including the existing diversity of city staff, to efforts to increase the diversity of city staff, obstacles to expanding the diversity of city staff, and efforts to increase the diversity of city staff who are managers, supervisors, or directors. Diversity information should include race, ethnicity, age, and immigration status.
Counsel Adrian.
Yeah, so I... Yeah, so thirty days, we do the first meeting, uh, in October. Uh, so again, to the human resource director, I would like members to be able to recognize diversity, what are the obstacles, um, and what are the efforts to increase diversity amongst the city staff, as we saw in the budget. Um, you know, we already, COVID operated, but we thought, and so I would understand, but this is...
I, I believe this should probably go, refer to the commission of diversity. That's why we put the commission together?
Say it again?
Refer to the, uh, commission of diversity?
No, I don't wanna refer it to the, no, I don't wanna do that, I wanna refer it to the human resources director, and I want, uh, let it know by the first meeting in October.
Second motion.
That's my word. I'm on the diversity community, and I have separated some who work as a counselor, and some who work at a member of active communities. I spoke to Bishop Brown about this, and he agrees.
Okay, so the motion is to refer it to, uh, uh, human resource, or answer back on October thirteenth. Counsel Martin, on the motion?
Now, I'm confused, because Bishop does not agree, because he reached out this morning to ask about some, but I just wanna leave it at that. And I think he reached out to you.
Yes, he did.
So I don't think he agrees, but it's the councilor's piece.
Madam President, regardless, uh, you know, the council has a piece, she's requesting it go to human resources. We have a second, I don't have much more about the case.
That's right. That's what I did. So... The motion is to refer it...
To HR.
Response back on the October thirteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No.
Item fifty-nine, um, President, is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request an update on the city hall organizational chart.
Counsel Adrian.
So I will refer this back to sponsor. And I received a working base chart, um, the next day, as I received a reset. I did make a request for them to publicly, uh, put it out, so that any of the other councils want to see it, they can see it. So we'll go and refer it back.
So the motion, item number fifty-nine, to refer back to sponsor, one second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out. Court, please read item number sixty.
Madam President, item number sixty is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request the mayor's office to report on the inventory of all city hall vacant buildings, parks, and lots, and to include the city's plans for them, if any.
Counsel Adrian.
Yeah, so the motion is for the mayor's office to give us a report on all the city hall vacant buildings, parks, and lots.
So the motion is to refer item number sixty to the mayor's office, uh, to give us a list of all the buildings and parks, lots, including the city plans for, uh, the vacant. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Second on that, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ice out. Court, please read item number sixty-one.
Well, as item of the agenda, Madam President, is a resolution issued by Council Adrian to request the mayor's office and Dale Palmer to update what will go on for seniors in the Connolly Center this fiscal year.
Counsel Adrian.
Uh, since COVID, uh, could be impacting, uh, the next fiscal year, I was just wondering if our, are you provided, uh, in terms of our... I just had a few last P, and they had no idea, or should we operate along with that, because I would, for my, uh, sale, all of them. Uh, they had all of them already happening for seniors this year, this fiscal year.
So the motion on item number sixty-one is to invite Dale Palmer to our next meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ice out. Uh, before we adjourn, uh, unfortunately, we had a little technical difficulties tonight, uh, and ECTV has been up here all night trying the hardest they can. If we, if there's any issues out there, I apologize for all the councils, we will get it straight eventually. It's putting, uh, old, what no, sometimes doesn't work. So sometimes saving money isn't always the right thing, so maybe ECTV should go into capital improvement, so that we eventually can get this right, for the, for our... Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to raise a point for support.
Counsel... Peter, McCallum, I'm sorry.
I just wanna remind the community that, uh, it's important to fill out your census, if you haven't filled out your 2020 census yet. It's important to get it done. Right now, the city of Everett has, has had a low response rate. Uh, this is gonna hurt us financially for the next ten years. So if you are watching this meeting, if you have not, uh, filled out your census yet, I encourage you to get it done. Every census, every person to say it's not counted is less dollars that come in to do some of the things that have been suggested tonight on our agenda to help alleviate, uh, some of the burden in our community. So again, I just wanna make sure that we get that word out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, uh...
Madam President, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your due diligence and making sure that we can get back into the chamber as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam President.
Second.
Court, please do a second, all in favor?